Testing. We'll call the meeting to order. If you can join me with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go to roll call.
Councilmember Kay.
Here.
Councilmember Strowman.
Here.
Councilmember Engle.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Walker.
Here.
And Mayor Hagan.
Here. So it looks like we have a couple of presentations today. One on the list here and then consent calendar stuff. Do you want to do consent calendar first? Or do you want to go presentations?
You can do that.
Okay. I guess we'll get the consent calendar through first. Anything want to be pulled by the council on three and four?
Nothing from me.
Out to the public, anyone want to pull three or four? No, online? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay. All right, we'll start here with with South, it looks like number one, South SSJID has a presentation for us here. City manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I will introduce the SSJID team who will provide an update on their bid, their effort that's been ongoing for some many years now to become the potential electric utility service provider in the area. I'm taking that service potentially from M, excuse me, PG&E.
Thanks for joining us today.
Good evening, council members. My name is Peter Reekirk. I'm the general manager at South San Joaquin Irrigation District. I'm pleased to have more than two employees in our, in the council chambers today, but for various reasons. With me today for presenting purposes, I have Katie Patterson, who is our Public and Government Relations Manager, and Bill Schwant, who is our Electric Utility Manager. And Bill will be speaking to our retail electric project and really providing the bulk of the presentation. But I did want to just preface it with a few comments, if I may. First, I did want to note, just as you'll see, there's a lot of activity in the room today. So I wanted to just make sure, I, you know, pointed out the elephant in the room. SSJID employees, over 100 employees that are critical to maintaining our infrastructure and providing service. Our vision statement is, I think, a good reflection of how we feel about our employees in that we maintain a respectful environment and we maintain our we are respectful to our employees, our community, and our environment. SSJID has been and continues to negotiate in good faith with its employees, and we currently have IBW Local 1245 as representation for our employees as well. And so I just want to note that you have a lot of participants in the crowd today, largely on behalf of our employee organization. SSJID is in contract negotiations and we continue to remain, to be committed to an open, respectful, and good faith negotiation with our employees. That being said, SSJID has continued its efforts toward becoming a retail electric provider. Starting in 2005 and going now for over 20 years, SSJID has been steadily making progress toward taking over PG&E as the investor-owned utility in the local area and purchasing SSJ, sorry, PG&E assets and becoming the local retail electric provider for the communities of Manteca, Escalon, and Ripon. For over 20 years, it has been a slog. The district has gone to Lafco several times. The district has has had to fight back a number of public information campaigns, and PG&E has been very adept at employing its allies when needed to oppose SSJID's retail electric project. And so the district has spent well over $35 million since, at least since back to 2008 on this project. But I can tell you that the savings associated with this project, to have a local, represented, locally-owned electric utility will save over $15 million annually for our local ratepayers. So the amount of money that the district has invested in this project to date will be surpassed in over, just over two and a half years of operation of our project. So enough of that at this point, and I don't want to steal the thunder. I'm going to bring Bill Schwant, SSJID's Electric Utility Manager.
Mayor, city council, staff, nice to see you this evening. My name is Bill Schwant, as Peter mentioned. Just a little bit more background on me. I've been in public power for, Peter likes to say, over 40 years. I like to say, you know, around 40 years. But I've been in the public power business for a long time, mainly in the North Dakota and Minnesota areas. But I was just the general manager at Modesto Irrigation District, so I have a familiarity with California public power as well. So I've been here in California for about five years doing public power. So let's talk a little bit about the retail electric project that South San Joaquin is proudly endeavoring. And basically, the purpose of my presentation is just to go over the details, have a conversation if you have any questions, and just really give you an update. So I'll give you an overview of the retail electric project. I'll talk about, again, what public power is and give you some examples from around the state. And then explain the path that Peter talked about just a little bit. Let's make sure this works. Oh, I got to turn it on first. There we go. So the mission, as you can read it there, is that we provide the utmost value for our agricultural, urban, and business community by protecting and delivering vital resources with exceptional service. Okay? And you know a little bit about us, here's some more details. We are close partners with Oakdale Irrigation District. We share senior water rights with them. We deliver about 50,000 acres of irrigation to Escalon, Manteca, and Ripon areas. And we deliver drinking water to about 215,000 residents in Manteca, Lathrop, and Tracy. With OID, we co-own the Tri Dam project. Three reservoirs and four hydro power projects and facilities along the Stanislaus River. About 125 megawatts of generation. Our vision is to be the premier organization that is focused on delivering electricity and water to this area. And when you look at it, you say delivering. I'll talk just a little bit about the electric industry and we won't go into a lot of detail, but I like to do it as like three circles, right? And if you look at PG&E, they're vertically integrated. They have generation, they have transmission, and they have distribution. We actually have generation, and we're trying to take over basically the distribution portion of what we're looking at here. And so we've been in public power for 75 years because of Tri Dam, doing generation. Now we're looking at doing distribution. So our, our vision is to become the premier retail electric provider for this area. So a little bit more on the Tri Dam project. Again, owned by SSJID and OID. It's an exceptional asset, series of assets, and a really good example of joint action. And I'm going to talk about joint action a bit more. And typically, joint action, we, we talk about it mainly between public entities, but really, we've done joint action, joint action with PG&E because they actually held the bonds for the first 50 years and took all the output from this, which ended in 2004, I believe. And after 2004, PG&E had paid off all the bonds. It became totally our asset. And we got the revenues from the sales of generation up in the, up in the Sierras. And you'd have to, it varies based on the amount of water that comes down that hill, but it's probably between 10 and, 10 and $20 million per year for SSJID. Same for OID. The board of SSG, local individuals just like you, local board members, back in the day, right, did some pretty awesome things, right? They built these dams. And think about the vision that that took, right? People just like you that are sitting in a room said, hey, let's, let's build some dams up there. And it took them two years to do it. And look at the benefits that it's provided here. And what the board in around that 2004 timeframe with SSJID, they made a policy and they said, you know, how do we share the benefits of the Tri Dam project with our, our local area? And the best thing they come up with is to form a retail electric utility so they could lower rates and provide some benefits to the communities that they serve irrigation water to and potable drinking water. So that's kind of a, in a nutshell, you know, local board members, local people trying to do what's best for their local area. And Tri Dam and what SSJID is trying to do with their retail electric project are two excellent, very visionary examples of that. So Powered by Purpose is really a program of ours where we are trying to get the word out saying that we can do this, we can provide that service. It'll be safe and reliable, it'll be locally controlled and accountable, and it'll be more affordable. So some of the numbers that Peter just talked about, we, we are saying that we're going to make sure that we, well, we're actually required to be 15% less than PG&E. And that'll save about, like Peter mentioned, $15 million per year. So if we spent over $35 million up to this point in all the studies and such that we've done, legal wranglings, it's still about a two-year payback. And then after that, it's like lots of benefits for many years to come. The, well, you, you can read the details, but there's a lot of infrastructure that we're looking at buying. Basically, all the lines that you see out there that are higher up and, and on poles and underground. All that is what we're looking to purchase. Okay, let's transition just a little bit to public power. And, and why would you do public power? We're saying, and really, we can prove it throughout the state and the country, better service, better value, better public service. Think rates, reliability, and local control. And when you think about local control, you think about, you know, people in this room making decisions. On the left, there's a, there's a box that has 170, 170 California cities and towns that receive public power. Across the country, there's about 2,000 public power utilities. I actually operated one in Minnesota, and we had rates that were probably 25% lower than Xcel Energy in our area. And we'll get to a little more how PG&E compares to public powers in the, in our area. Okay, so I heard a beep. Now is there any, oh, okay, no. I just wanted to make sure I didn't have a timer on me somewhere. Okay, so public power's value. And as I mentioned, we're going to provide 15% savings, $15 million a year. First 10 years, 174 million. And those numbers are actually low. We're updating all those numbers. Those numbers are going to go up. PG&E's rates have gone up. So we're going to have some different numbers coming up. The interesting thing about public power is we provide, public power throughout the country provides a benchmark to investor-owned utilities. There's actually only about 20% of the customers that are served throughout the country with public power. The other 80% are served by investor-owned utilities. Public power becomes a benchmark. So the investor-owned utilities don't like public power. They'll complain about the tax exempt financing. They'll complain about, you know, other, you know, federal power that some public powers get. They won't talk about the high salaries that they pay for their chief executives or some of their benefits from, from tax-free, or not tax-free, but, you know, they get business tax credits and write-offs for all their investments. And that's all fine and dandy, right? I have nothing against investor-owned utilities, but I am presenting a different option here. Okay, and why would I present a different option? Take a look at the rates. These are from Sacramento Municipal Utility District's website. So I'm not creating these. These are right, right from SMUD. I have created these in Minnesota, and they're, it takes a lot, a lot of time to go through everybody's rates to make sure that it's right before you put it out there in public. And SMUD did that. If you look at the way to the left is SMUD, they are one-third the price of PG&E. If you look at TID, they're about the same. MID is about 60% lower than TID. And those are all examples right in our area. So I mean, we're talking about saving 15%, and our other neighboring utilities are saving, you know, anywhere from a third, anywhere, they're saving them more than 50%. So their rates are a third to a half of what PG&E's are. And that's, I believe, where we would be trending right off the bat. Soon as we get, soon as we start, we have to be 15% below, but I believe we could, you know, do even better than that. So one-third to half the price and twice as reliable. So same thing, on the bottom is the public powers, and on the top is PG&E. And these, again, are reliability, reliability numbers that, that go right to the CPUC. So these are all publicly available information. So you've got Modesto Irrigation District with 30 minutes of sustained power interruptions per year. Compare that to PG&E's 176. So when I spoke to the Rotary Club, I said, I said, one-third to one-half the price, twice as reliable. One-third to half the price, twice as reliable. Do I need to go any farther, right? So, but I will. 15% discount is realistic. It basically is just showing you what the costs are on the right-hand side there. Cost of power is a big deal. It's usually 50 to 75% of the cost. Distribution expense is really all the, what the linemen and the customer service staff and everybody would be doing here. Debt service, that's what, you know, PG&E will complain about, that we get tax exempt financing. Debt service is a big deal. It's probably the third biggest, but cost of power is, is much more of an issue. Okay, we've done big projects before. We're actually doing a big, big one right now. So there's a, there's a list of big projects, everything from starting an irrigation district to what I talked about earlier, the dams in the, in the Sierras. We've done solar projects. We've, and we're right now, this fall, will be starting on a major tunneling project, our canyon tunnel to bypass our main supply canal, which is in danger of rock slides. That's about a $90 million project. PG&E will be multiples of that, three or four. The path to public power. So I'm from Minnesota, North Dakota, so that's, that was why I put that in there. It kind of looks like home. Peter talked about this, so I'm not going to get into much detail. It's 20 years of back and forth on legal battles and approvals. So everything from 2004 to now, 2024. Where are we at right now? We've got, we're going strong, but we have two final legal battles, right? A right-to-take trial and a utility valuation trial. And Peter and I both talked about the significant financial, engineering, and operational studies that we've done. 35-plus million to date, and there's a lot of detail there, and we've, we're getting our ducks in a row. So we're ready to do this. PG&E will say we can't do it, we can do it. I've done it for 40 years. There's plenty of friends out there to help us, and we can do it. So the next steps, we do, and PG&E is really good at, at tying us up in the legal and regulatory areas. And so right now, we were scheduled for June, two months ago, 2025, to go to the right-to-take trial. So we were pretty much ready to do that. And PG&E is now trying to drag us to the California Public Utilities Commission, which I would argue is, is more friendly to them than it would be to us. And there's, we're not, we don't even have a scoping memo that they, that they promised us in January. So the CPUC is not getting back to us. They're just sitting on it. And we're waiting for that to resolve itself, and then we will have the right-to-take trial scheduled. Hopefully by June of 2026. So another year delay. And then tonight, you've got a memorandum of understanding that will be in front of you. I would beg you to approve that. It would show support. And it basically, a memorandum of understanding is, is more informal. The more formal agreements will come after we win those trials. But this is basically saying that we, we at SSJID will make you whole regarding any of the tax advantages that PG&E paid property taxes, PG&E paid a franchise fee. We would pay a payment in lieu of taxes, which is legal, and we would pay franchise fees. That would, that would make you whole. So that's the MOU, and that's what we'll promise. So here's the slide that everybody loves to see, the final one. And I will conclude with, with, we can do this, right? Many will say that we can't do this. We absolutely can do this. We will start the retail electric utility in the Escalon area, Ripon, Manteca, and all the surrounding areas, and save initially 15% right off the bat. And then trend toward what MID is providing, what SMUD is providing, what TID is providing, what Roseville is providing, what Lowdi is providing. I mean, there's a lot of public power examples. And then finally, why can we do this? We're not-for-profit. We have local control. We have joint action. So we've got not-for-profit, you know, we, that's 15% right there. Local control is exactly what you're doing tonight. And when you think about that local control and what it means, municipal utilities and irrigation districts and cooperatives throughout the country build a better electric system. Why do they do that? They do that because they don't want to get calls from mayors and councilpeople in the middle of the night because there's a big outage out there. So they, because of that local control, you get better reliability, you get better service. And on top of that, you get a lower rate. That's great. So not-for-profit, local control, joint action. And joint action is, is a really fun one to talk about. I won't spend a lot of time on it, but it's really interesting to see how others will come to help us do what we're looking at doing. So, again, we can do this, and it's going to be a lot of fun. Thank you, and I will answer questions if there are any.
The board have any questions?
I do. Yeah, well, thank you for the presentation. I, I heard you say several, several times about a 15% reduction versus PG&E. How does that compare to current ratepayers that SSJID is currently servicing?
As far as, we don't serve any retail electric.
Zero.
Well, we serve our own loads, you know, so SSJID has their own, they provide, we provide our own service, but, but no, we don't provide any retail electric to anyone.
And then I guess a follow-up to that would be, you, you talked about trying to get rates similar to those other agencies that you talked about. It's, it's hard for me to wrap my head around because I'm thinking if it's 15%, why would a business try to continually reduce that? So how, how do we ensure that, that that actually happens? And what would you see as the, the progression of how long that would take to be on par with SMUD and TID, MID, and so forth?
Well, that's part of the, the studies that we're updating right now, so we will be doing a pretty in-depth financial analysis as soon as the board sees it and it becomes public. You can, you can page through it, look through it. And that's kind of the answer to your other question too, is 15% is a start. Why would a business go lower than that? Well, for one, we're not-for-profit. For two, you're going to be able to see all the financials, see everything. And if we're making a pile of money, right, you'll see that. And you'll say, why didn't you lower our rates? Give some of that back. And that certainly is what's going to happen, is there'll be a period of time where you have to build up some reserves so that you, if you have a major incident, you've got to have some money in the, in the reserves. But after that, the rates are going to go down because there's nowhere else to put it. You're going to give it back to the, to the community. You're not going to, because if you keep it there, you'll be able, you'll be able to see it, right? SSJID is audited every year. It's public. You can watch it on YouTube or on the web. So I, I hope that answers your question, but I'll, I'll answer another one if you got it.
Yeah, it, it does. You know, I'm all in favor of it. Please come replace PG&E. I want to make sure there's some guardrails for us as well, because it just makes sense, like, hey, if we can charge them just 15% less, that's a great profit model for us. All of that will be public. When, when will that be decided, like what that reserve amount is? So that we can kind of gauge how long that process may take. of gauge how long that process may take?
Well, I'll just tell you right now, you can look at any public power entity and they're going to keep about 125 days of, uh, daily operating expenses.
125.
So 125 days. We actually liked 200 days. We lived in the Midwest, there's tornadoes, there's all kinds of stuff. Uh, you know, so we had 200 days, but you won't see very many that have more than that. So that's, once you get to 200 days, it's like, okay, you got enough. And you can come to the board meeting and say, you guys have 250 days of, uh, reserves. Don't you think that maybe that's a little too much? Bill Schwank told us a couple of years ago that 200 days was fine. So yeah, you can do that. Just come right to the board and ask them and they're going to have to answer you. And they'll bring a, their finance person in and say, oh, you know, but that's local control. That, you don't get to go in the, in the boardroom of PG&E. They can, they can sock away whatever they want to sock away. They can invest in what they want to invest in and they're doing it for their shareholders, but I've been here for five years in California and so has Patty Poppy and she's made a lot more money than I have. And I'm a public power. She's a investor-owned utility.
Thank you for your answers.
Any other questions up here?
Yeah, I have one question. Um, Bill, thank you for your time and thank you for the presentation. Uh, as you know, in Escalon, we're kind of split currently between PG&E and MID. Um, can you explain?
Be thankful you got, be thankful you got some MID.
I'm on PG&E and I'm not thankful, so. Um, but just for our constituents, can you explain as far as taking over utility here in Escalon, what would that look like for the current MID customers?
Well, I just showed you the graph and it says MID is 60% lower than PG&E. That means they'd be about 45% lower than us. There'd be a revolt if we even suggested that we would take over any of those. We would have no plans whatsoever of taking over MID. As far as we're concerned, they're both consumer-owned utilities. So, you know, we're all in the same game and they were here first, fair and square, and you just, you would just leave them. So that, that difference in rate for a while is going to be still a difference in rate.
Okay. And, and for the other constituents out there, obviously in Escalon, we have both, we have employees of both PG&E and SSJID, um, in our constituency. And, um, so for the residents that are PG&E employees, I, I don't think that that, that's not what this is about. Um, we recognize that they are residents, however, um, as I sit here today, I am so sick and tired of the ridiculousness of PG&E, um, for the community. Uh, myself and council member Kay recently learned in 2024, uh, PG&E raised the rate seven times in 2024. And, um, quite frankly, I'm not speaking for the other council. I'm speaking for myself, but enough is enough. And, um, I'm sick and tired of it and I appreciate you taking the time to come to council tonight.
I'll say one thing about, uh, IBW. I served alongside IBW for the last 40 years. So I've got a lot of friends that are IBW. I've worked shoulder to shoulder with them through all kinds of storms and, and good days and bads. So I mean, I think there's not a problem with working with IBW. We have IBW employees, as Peter mentioned, and, um, there's always going to be, you know, ups and downs with a relationship, but, uh, all in all, working for a public power as a IBW employee is a, is a wonderful thing. Um, and I worked with MID, you know, and they had IBW as well. So, um, we'll, we'll get through that. And there, there's going to be plenty of opportunities with SSJID for IBW employees. And, um, we will have to compete in order to attract and retain our employees. Um, just as most public entities, we probably have better benefits, but maybe a bit lower salaries. And, uh, but everyone's going to have to just look at the package, look at how much they're going to have to travel, where they're going to live, that type of thing, and then make their decisions. But, uh, the PG&E employees will have options because they'll be able to continue with PG&E or they'll have options with us and, uh, we'll treat them very well.
I have one more question, either for you or for Peter, and that is, besides the MOU, how can we help?
Well, certainly we appreciate the council's consideration of the MOU today. Um, the district is currently working, we have an active, uh, powered-by-purpose campaign and you can certainly log in and follow, uh, sign up for email updates, uh, on our project as they're available. As you can guess, given how slow the project has progressed, it's, it's not a, it's not a, um, wait on the edge of your seat type of, uh, update. So it'll, it's very slow coming, um, but we are working on revamping that powered-by-purpose, um, public information campaign soon. Um, and we look forward to, um, providing opportunities for council members from someone like yourself, um, or the states to participate, uh, possibly in, uh, pending letters to, um, our legislature, our elected officials, uh, as well as the PUC. So stay tuned with that and appreciate your patience, um, as we, as we are revamping and creating, um, more opportunities for you to be engaged, for our local constituents to be engaged. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm not sure this necessarily qualifies as a question. It's more of a, a statement. I have a, a PG&E bill in front of me and an MID bill in front of me and it shows the difference in kilowatt hours. Um, so this is more for public consumption than anything, you know? I want our residents to understand, you know, what it is that, that is actually happening here. PG&E off-peak is charging 50 cents, and I'm rounding that number slightly, uh, per kilowatt hour. On-peak, they are at, uh, right at 63 cents when you round that up slightly. In comparison, MID is 18 cents off-peak and 21 cents on-peak, or literally one-third of a kilowatt hour. So that's why council member Strohman and I have been pursuing this with SSJID, why we met with Congressman Harder a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we now have a, a meeting on the books with Senator McNerney. Um, and we're, we're pushing in every direction that we can to help you guys move this along. Um, I guess that my only one question would be, given that we have MID on one side of a street here in Escalon and several places, PG&E on the other, how soon do you think after SSJID taking over that you're going to see comparable rates between the, those two things, where they're going to come together and look a little more similar?
It's, it's going to be a while. I mean.
Obviously it's not going to happen overnight and I think that any logical person understands that, so.
But it depends too, right? I mean, all the financials are going to be put together and you'll get a chance to look at those, like when we purchase, right? Because that'll be an issue. PG&E has some legacy equipment, generation, transmission, that type of thing that we will have to pay a portion for. So we're going to be paying off a little bit of legacy, but then at the same time, we're kind of free to pick whatever we want. If the market looks great for a decade, we could really be doing well. Maybe the rates go down by another 20%. Um, it all is going to depend on that big power supply, uh, section of that buy chart, that pie chart or that bar chart. Um, so I mean, it really is, uh, did we hit the market right? Did we, did we do this at the right time? And at the same time, there's risk. We could be doing this at the wrong time. Um, like we've said, we, we spent over 35 million. That's just a drop in the bucket on what it costs to run a utility. And, um, but on the power supply area, if we could work with others and, uh, sharing some of their resources and come up with a power supply that's similar to theirs, you could see those rates go down substantially. So there's always hope and there's always hope when, when you're the one locally controlling it. If it's PG&E messing around with their power supply and come up with a good deal, you know, they're probably going to share it with their stockholders before they share it with their ratepayers.
Right. So. Well, it, it doesn't seem like you have much of a say as to when it is that you are actually able to take over this. It's 100% in our state legislator's hands that, uh, are allowing this to be drug on for so long and it, it's absolutely criminal at this point, what they're doing to our residents.
Yeah, yeah. I think that PUC, um, action that's in place, that's the one first we got to get by. That's the, they're just, they're just holding us up. We were supposed to be in court in June of 2025. We were supposed to be, you know, operational by probably 2028. Now it's probably 2029, so we're four years out if things go well. But the first thing we need to do is get by the California Public Utilities Commission in the 851 slide that I showed you. So thanks for your help and, and yeah, talk to people. Talk to your legislators. Try and get this moving.
You definitely are talking to anybody that we can and I can promise you that.
Thank you.
Uh, any other questions up here? Okay. Um, do appreciate you coming in. Um, it's eye-opening to, to see the numbers firsthand. Um, I did have, before we go into the next section where I just want, it sounds like there's some labor negotiation stuff happening, so, um, you can come up and ask a question for the SSJID, but it's got to be related to Escalon, okay? So, um, that being said, do we have any questions from the audience?
Um, the word talking. Um, my question is, I have solar. So when I got solar, I, you know, I have to connect through PG&E and I started with them buying my power to now owing about $2,000 a year in my true-up. So how would this affect my connection into your service and, and what is that rate in comparison for how your true-up works? Is it an annual, the same as PG&E?
I'll answer it here so everybody can hear it. Um, well, first of all, your rates are going to go down by 15%. So you got to work that into the, uh, equation. And then we're certainly going to honor, uh, solar. Number one, it's beneficial to us, just like it's beneficial to PG&E. Um, again, the rates are going to go down 15%. So it's possible that your, the, the, your savings might go down by 15%, but generally you're going to, you're going to save on it. But we'll be, we'll be fair and we'll be public and everybody will have a chance to, to look at it and talk about it.
To ask that question a, a bit more specific, if I may? Um, basically PG&E has made it where, where having solar profits them and does not profit the ratepayer any longer. Um, I don't know the exact numbers, but it seems to me that they, they purchase at, you know, this ridiculous 50, you know, kilowatt hour. Uh, but whatever power it is that goes back onto PG&E's grid, they get like eight cents on, you know, what, what they're being charged 50 cents for. And I think that the question, you know, kind of is, are you guys going to maintain a scheme like that or are you guys going to get back to, uh, if you're producing a kilowatt hour for us, we're going to pay you for the kilowatt hour?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's probably easier to answer it by saying, look at what MID is doing. Because we'd probably be very similar to them, right? They're, they're publicly owned. They have people coming in and, and filling in audience like this. And so they've kept their rates like they were. They didn't change them like PG&E did when they had the opportunity to do that, right? They could have been bad guys and, but that's not what MID and that's most likely what our board would do. Um, so a good question, good follow-up question. Interesting thing about that follow-up question, if you dig into it a little bit, there was a Supreme Court action that went against the California Public Utilities Commission on the NIM III, uh, changes that PG&E did. And, uh, there's a nuance to it. It's a little too difficult to describe, but it's basically going back to the courts and the courts have to take a look at it. So that issue is not over.
Well, that's good. That's.
Any other questions from the public?
Actually, I had a piggyback question on solar.
Hold on, hold on a sec though. Um, any other questions from the public and then we'll come back to the dais.
Hi, it's not really a question, it's more like a statement. Um, four years is disappointing, but I'm sure it's disappointing for all of you too. Anyway, um, I would hope, just as a statement, that, um, as PG&E continues to raise their rates and they're getting ready to raise them again, you know, I would have liked, I, I've been watching this project for a while. I was hoping it would happen like, you know, five, 10 years ago, but whatever. Um, I would hope that instead of, um, let's just say, for example, it happened today. I know it's not going to, but let's just say it happened today and PG&E raises their rate, they're, they're already going to be raising their rates again. Um, I would hope that you would not go 15% lower than the new rate, but the current rate. So I, I would just, I know you've got to pay, the, I know you got to pay your debt and I, and, and having money set aside for the 120, 200 days, that is smart business. It's not just smart business, it's smart homeowners. I have to have a kitty in my home too and I have a budget and I've got to live on my budget and so that makes sense to be able to pay things ahead of time instead of loaning money out and now paying interest too. That's dumb. So anyway, I think that's smart. Um, but I would hope that maybe you could prolong, you know, recouping your funds to help us because we're, I'm already beyond my limit with this new rate. I don't know, y'all. Come, you know, buy me more fans or something. It's just a statement.
I'll think, I'll just make one comment though. Um, she looks at me like, I'm going to make the decision? I'm not going to make the decision. Yeah, well, I'm going to, I'm going to, you know, I'll recommend to Peter, Peter will recommend to the board of directors, like, you know, you folk. And, uh, you know, they'll make the decision. And I would guess, again, they're, just because PG&E went up, they wouldn't go up. I mean, again, look at MID, look at TID, they're independently making their rates and boards of directors really look closely at their rates. If, if they're, if there's anything that they look at really closely, it's the rates. You know why? Because people are calling them. So, so I, they're not going to be lockstep with PG&E. They, they can't hide away in a, in a board, boardroom and, and make those kind of decisions.
Uh, any other questions?
My question is, um, before SSJID takes on this enormous responsibility, um, running an electric service for this community, how can the public trust that you'll follow through on the promises to ratepayers when you haven't reached a fair contract with the skilled workers who are already?
We got to cut that off. Labor union discussions aren't here tonight, okay? Sorry.
It's a question.
Apologize, but it's the wrong venue for it. Um, anyone else from the town or around the town has questions about this? Okay.
So what the city council's saying just here publicly is you guys are not willing to hear from the workers that provide the water for South San Juan Irrigation District. You guys don't care about those issues.
That's not the situation. We don't, we're not getting in the middle of your guys' contract dispute.
It's not in the middle of the contract. It's the.
No, this is not your venue for that, sir. That, that's all there is to it.
That's all we're going to make sure of.
You want to talk to me on a different time, on my time? That's fine, but not on the public, uh, time. Okay. Um, anyone else? All right. Bring it back to the dais.
So yeah, my question was about solar. Does, um, the minimum fee of $10 a month, the minimum $10 connection fee, um, and ever-growing, is that something that SSJID would also be required to charge for all solar?
You know how I'm going to answer this, right? I'm going to say that's up to the board, but what's this minimum fee? Like a customer charge or?
Yeah, they have a minimum.
It's a connection charge, so tap into their line.
Okay.
You have to pay. Now it's 1243.
Sure, sure. I mean, that's all in that realm of rates. So I mean, that would be lumped in with the rate setting that the board would do and they would take a look at things. Again, I'd take a look at other public powers in the area and see what they're doing and see, because they're going to be reasonable. I mean, uh, but they're going to be different than PG&E, like we talked earlier. PG&E is paying virtually nothing for excess power that you generate off-peak and, uh, they're only paying really on-peak. MID is doing it differently and so would the other public powers, so.
And one other question for Peter.
Did you, um, get a $20 million bonus last year?
No, sir.
Okay, so it's important for the constituents to understand that last year when PG&E declared bankruptcy, the next week they gave their CEO a $20 million bonus on the backs of all of us. So just wanted to state that publicly. Thank you.
Um, and any, anyone online at all?
We have a couple callers, but no one with their hands raised.
Okay. Uh, any other questions to the dais before we? Okay. All righty, we'll move on to, well, thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate the presentation. Um, we'll move on to the next presentation. It looks like, uh, the EPF is coming up with, uh, the foundation funds. They were looking to put that skate park in.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff. I'm Jeff Leggero, I'm the current president of the Escolon Park Foundation. We have a few members of the foundation here, we have a founding member, Gracie Marks is here, Debbie Merkin, and Dave Bellinger. First off, I wanna thank the council for the opportunity to have the booth this last year, it was our, our highest grossing fundraiser to date. We met our $125,000 goal, so we are sitting it right at $125,000. We still have a check coming from the Lions Club, and we still have some taxes to pay for the sales tax from the fireworks booth, but when you pencil it all out, we're right at 125. So, I, I very much appreciate the opportunity to have that booth and to hit that goal, so thank you for that. We're here tonight, we've been talking with Dreamland, our builder, they provided a tentative start date of December 1st, so we're penciled in on the books for December 1st. We've got our, our fundraising goal has been met, we have the design, we have the opportunity now to sit down and try and confirm the, the location that we're gonna put the park in. So we did a master plan for the additional acreage at Hogan Ennis Park, and the, during that process, a location was chosen for the, the skate park, and it was just to the north of the feed store. Since that time, that has become overflow parking, we think the overflow parking is necessary, it's been well-received and people are using it. So now we're trying to move the park to what appears to be the west end of the, of that overflow parking. So, as you can see on the, that's the master plan that's up on the screen right now, and you can see the Escolon Feed Store down in the, the lower right corner. Just above that, there's a lighter gray box, that was the location originally designated for the skate park, back when the master plan was done. That is the overflow parking right now, so the, the thought and conversation, both, I believe, members of staff went out to that site at one point with members of the Park Foundation, and looked over the site, and it appears that the consensus is to move that skate park to the west, and move it just into that west, the southwest corner of that parking area. And it would be just north of the equipment shed. The graphic you're seeing now shows the skate park at the west end of the, of the overflow parking, to the north of the equipment shed. That is a 100 by 100 footprint, that was the original design that Dreamland came up with for the skate park, and what we're proposing to deliver is the bowl after the fundraising and re, meeting our fundraising goal of $125,000. That would be Phase 1, it would be a standalone feature that could be used, and we have the money and we have the builder ready to go. So what we are hoping to do tonight is to have the council confirm that site. Once that site location is, is confirmed, then we will go back to Dreamland, they will begin the construction plans and do the engineering on that site to make sure we have proper drainage. I'm happy to keep talking, but trying to keep it short and sweet for y'all, and if there's questions, I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Any questions at the dais? I have one question for you, or I guess it's for staff also. Is that square representative of the actual dimensions? So...
Yeah, if we go down one more slide, yes, that square, that you see, the lighter square to the left of the overflow parking, is approximately 100 by 100. We have placed generally the first improvement that is to be made per the presentation, the cloverleaf bowl in an approximate location per the graphic that's been provided by EPF.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, so, thanks for coming.
Thanks for having me.
So, just for the community's information, when was fundraising started for this?
So, the Escolon Park Foundation was created by the city back in 2011, and 2011, then city manager Henry Hessling had had the idea to create the Park Foundation. Park Foundation partnered with the Rec Department, and originally, the Park Foundation and the Rec Department were operating the Escolon Fireworks Booth, and that was the primary fundraising mechanism. Over the years, we've reached out to Jerdick, Tony Hawk, different foundations, we've never been able to acquire a grant, we hired a grant writer for a while, the median income for the city of Escolon was too high to, most of those grants are for inner cities or lower-income areas, so we were never able to, to secure a grant. So we continued on with the fundraising, basically through the, through the fireworks booth, that's been the biggest one, that's about, been about $10,000 a year. We, the Park Foundation, was asked to take the fireworks booth over entirely from the city in about 2013, I believe it was, because the city was having to pay overtime to staff to staff it, so any money that the city was generating was going to pay salaries. So, the Park Foundation took over the fireworks booth in 2013. So since 2013, we've been fundraising through the fireworks booth. We had an opportunity with the Lions Club to run the wine booth at the park feet, that's less of a moneymaker, but it is a good opportunity to be out in the public and display the, the design and keep interest going. So, we've tried a number of different efforts to get a big donor to, you know, line somebody up, we'll put their name up, we'll put the plaque up, you know, name the park after them, just no, no takers. So this has been, you talk about a grassroots effort, this has been small donations from the local community and their, you know, kids bringing their $20 birthday money and, you know, and donating it, buying fireworks from us. So, it's been a long time coming, but you've got a dedicated crew that's been there since the beginning to make sure that, that money was raised and, and goes to the skate park.
And you mentioned that the bowl is Phase 1, how many total phases do you envision?
There's really three phases, so we, we priced the bowl, Dreamland had suggested that be the first feature. So, we priced that with them, we told them where we were at with the fundraising, they deeply discounted a lot of the work that they're gonna do. We also went with Dreamland because they will allow us to get donations from the community for materials, skid steers, you know, fencing, porta-potties, things like that for the actual construction. So, they, they've been great to work with, they've been with us for, for many years, and a lot of starts and stops with this, but they, they've been very good with us. So the bowl is Phase 1, and that is, as you see in that graphic right there, there's a two-foot deck around the bowl for the $125,000. As we get donations, or we get additional, you know, materials donated that reduces our cost, then we can start to expand on that and hopefully do a little bit more in Phase 1. Phase 2 is just below the bowl, you see a couple trees there, there's some street features there. That turned out to be about a 2,000 square foot, 2,000 to 3,000 square foot area, and it was pretty, pretty basic for $125,000 also. And so, in consultation with Dreamland and talking with skaters that we know, they all ended up suggesting, "Start with a bowl for 125 grand." The, the other phase, if we weren't gonna do the bowl, the other phase would be the entire right side of that screen, and it's got the run, and it's got a few other features there. That's significantly more expensive, we didn't even price out for a final price with that because it was twice the size of, of the other features that we were gonna go with. So that would be, from a skater's point of view, the bowl's first, the right side would be second, and then the, the bottom left corner would be the third phase.
So if I'm being completely honest with you, Jeff, my, here's my concern. I appreciate the blood, sweat, and tears that you and Irene, Gracie, and Gary, and Debbie, and Walt, and Dave have put forth in this effort. My concern is that we're spending $125,000 for a bowl, and it's gonna be another 25 years till the skate park is finished.
Well, that's, you know, one of the things that we considered with the bowl was, that is a standalone feature, and so that's why we went with a bowl. So, if the fundraising goes like this first round did, then it'll be a while for other features. If the city decides that they want to invest in the park, whether it's donations from community members, or it's the construction of the Murphy's property off of Brennan 120, there's gonna be a pretty significant influx of money into the Rec Fund. So there's, what we did is, we're looking at private money that was raised to build a feature so that the skaters in the city would have a place to go, they'd have a feature that they could use. The bowl is considered intermediate to advanced, with the beginner's able to use it as well. So, you know, that's, that's where the conversation's certainly taking that into consideration, is what's gonna happen with the, with the remainder of the features, but that's why we went with a standalone bowl.
I'm ready to engage in conversation, yeah. Okay, so, hello, and welcome, okay. I was able to watch the Recreation Commission meeting, thank you so much for giving them the presentation, it was very clear, so for those of you in the room or online, whatnot, that is available on YouTube. It was a little bit more in-depth of your history and background and whatnot, but it was a very good reminder of where we've been, where we've come from. And so it has taken about, I'm just gonna reiterate, it's taken about 15 years to raise $125,000, and that would be less than a third, right, of what we'll need to complete the park. And so, our estimates right now, if we were continuing to fundraise, our estimates to raise $125,000 over the next 15 years, or are there other fundraisers that EPF are putting in place to possibly streamline this, maybe kick off some more fundraising and, and get it going a little quicker on your side?
Yeah, we'd like to think that once the, the bowl is in the ground, that the community will see that, okay, you know, it's, it's happening, and those that have been kind of on the sidelines for donating and all would, would step up. There's no guarantee, you know, but the Park Foundation was designed to continue on with fundraising. If the, you know, if this Board or a future Board decides that there's other projects that are more pressing, and they wanna raise money for those projects, they certainly can. But, you know, if, if we're going to raise money, we wanna be very clear with the community if they're donating, you know, like we were here, they were donating for a skate park, you know, for the ability to skate in town. So, that's, it's, we've tried different things, we've tried a number of different ways to, to fundraise, we've looked at all the variety of fundraising opportunities over the many years, and so I just don't have any guarantee of what, how long it's gonna take. But we would hope that somebody would step up and say, "Yeah, we wanna finish out this phase, or we wanna do another feature."
Thank you for being honest with that, I do know that you have some background in fundraising, so I know that you, and maybe your family, do know how to fundraise a little bit quicker also, so hopefully the community will come out, and I think if asked for help, the community would be willing to come out and help EPF to raise those funds.
Yeah, we'd love that.
And so, a paved park is definitely needed in Escolon. When we started this, there was a lot more paved surfaces that were available to our citizens, and so the schools were where we, a lot of us grew up in Escolon, in a safe place to be able to skate, or bike, or rollerblade, or do those things that we do on paved surfaces. I personally used to skate at El Patel, and, you know, we learned how to ride our bike at Dent, and so there was lots of that asphalt available to us, which has not, as, as glad as I am to use the church parking lots, it's not exactly the same as being enclosed, like a paved park would be. My observation would be that we don't have that space at the moment for skaters to start in that beginner, to intermediate, to become skaters good enough to use a bowl. We don't have that space in Escolon. And so, if I were to discuss, which I am, what we would do with a skate park to begin our Phase 1, I would argue that we might want to err on the side of beginner, intermediate features, not only because that way we can get skaters off to be able to use a bowl in the future, but I almost, I have some safety concerns, and I know you had mentioned, being at this location, you know, mom could drop one kid off at baseball and then the other kids could go skate. Well, I, I don't see many places for the beginner intermediates while they're there to be practicing skating, there's not much paved surfaces at that location, and again, I'm, I'm a little concerned for those that would try, I guess, or be in the way for those who do know what they're doing. And you had mentioned you had talked to some skaters about putting in a bowl, and is that recently?
Yeah.
And then what age are those skaters that we're referring to?
Teenagers and older. So, we have a lot of parents that have kids, I guess that's the way I would describe it, that the adults are skaters that are looking for a location, take their kids skating, and that's kind of what the, the philosophy was behind the skate park. We had a dad who had to take his kids, you know, to other jurisdictions to use their skate parks and stuff, so he wanted to have a place locally where he could take his kids and go skate. So, you know, I'm not a skater, so I'm kinda going off of what, you know, the information that we're picking up along the way.
Perfect, and, and, yeah, and so my, my observation would be the younger ones that have to stay in town, the ones that are coming off of school, in middle school, and skating to the skate park, aren't the ones able to get in their car to go use a bowl, right? So, those are the ones I would rather cater to, the ones that are, you know, getting off of school, either Dent, El Patel, going to the skate park, hanging out, having fun, learning how to skate. And I am a little bit concerned, which is the conversation we'll have later tonight about the location, just with the lack of walkability for the kids, and if you're gonna split Escolon in quadrants, that's not exactly the quadrant that's closest to most of our residential, our residential spaces, or our schools that might need to access that. So, those are some of my concerns, some of my observations. I am excited about the ability to put in a paved park, so that we do have a safe place for our kids to play. Oh, and then maybe consider, I know that we're low on funds, I mean, we're right tight on funds.
Right.
But putting in some benches as well, maybe some cement benches that would also serve as some of those street features you were talking about.
Right.
And then, would we also be putting up fencing around the skate park, and would that be the responsibility of EPF?
That would be a conversation we'd have to have for, there's two steps here. One, let's identify the location, two, an MOU with the city and just figure out what the parameters are. The, you know, we're looking at it like we have a finite budget right now, and so we're trying to figure out project delivery, and to where we could actually deliver a project for the community that is usable, and that's, that's one of the big considerations that we have. As far as the locations go, you know, as long as we've been in this process, we've looked at community parks, and we've looked at Main Street Park, which we still like, is a great location, but the city doesn't own it. So the big drawbacks were if the city owned it, or, or there residences around it. So, and anytime that we looked at, like, Lotta Park, we looked at Sanchez, we looked at a number of them, and those were, the residents around them were deal breakers. The, the recharge basins that we include in our park space, the, those aren't gonna work, you know, because there's no way we can get enough drainage in there to get those things cleared out. So it really did limit, you know, the, the actual locations that we could actually build a skate park. And then, when the, when we were going through the acquisition of the overflow, the 19 acres there, the Paulus property, then we went to workshops, we went to the master plan, and everything just brought it back to the, the Hogan Ennis Park, and to put it out there. I don't know that, I don't know that the original location is better than this location to move it more off the street, so you don't have skateboards flying around. It is more centrally located, the park can be, you know, closed, dusted on, so it can be used during the daylight hours, the park is pretty, pretty regularly used, so, you know, parents bringing their kids out there would have the opportunity to use it. You know, and if we get the, if... You know, and if we get the, if we do really good on donations, once the construction starts, you know, it'll be easy to add concrete. We've already talked to P and L previously on this, and the, the builder has reached out to them for the, the mix and stuff. But if we can get the right donations, we can add concrete, you know, just concrete to where kids would be able to, to skate. And then, you know, if we can get a bench donated, or concrete donated to, to put the bench in and stuff, we're more than happy to do that. We're, we're kind of looking at this as, this is the starting point. This is the, this is where we start, and then we build off of that. And hopefully there's energy behind that to, to continue on and build those features too.
Okay. And I am so glad that you're here to engage in conversation with us tonight. I do, I don't like to say I wish that, and, you know, we have regrets, but I do wish that I had heard a little bit more from EPF in the past, both being on Recreation Commission since 2014. I don't think I've ever had a presentation by EPF and then at council, this is the second time, the first being at the fireworks booth. So I appreciate that you come. And it is, it does need to be a partnership, right? And we do need to know what's going on, including where you're at financially. And I do know that the city manager is to sit in on your annual meeting in November. And so is that something that has been ongoing? And did we start with Henry Hessling and go through, and everybody has been participating in your annual meeting? Is that to update and do the whole director's thing? Is that, is that something that's ongoing?
It is ongoing. Dominique Romo was involved in that.
Okay.
She was at the, the last meeting, ratified the, the board and all that.
Okay.
Yeah, I've been on it for a couple of years, and one of the things I, one of the first things we did was look at the bylaws and update the bylaws to actually fit with how the, the foundation is operating. So we've done that. So going forward, I, I, we've had good conversations with Jalen. I would imagine that he's going to be invited to those annual meetings, whenever we do hold those. And, and I think that ultimately, you know, that relationship will build, will just continue to build. We have, you know, that, I think one of the reasons why we weren't here is we were having conversations, but there was nothing to have a conversation with the council. When I was on the council, there were a number of conversations going on that had to do with, you know, funding. But what we took, took away from that was that the appetite of the community was to not use rec funds to build the skate park. So then it became a, okay, well, let's try and do this with private funding only. And it avoided, you know, both, you know, the issue against using, you know, limited rec funds, because they are, they have been limited for a long time, but also to try and do this without the prevailing wage issue, which added a great deal of expense to, to the park. You know, and you, you start out thinking, hey, we're going to build this beautiful Cadillac park, you know, then the reality of the fundraising kicks in, and then you just try and figure out, okay, how are we going to deliver on this? You know, how are we going to give the community something that they believe in? You know, and it, and you're right, it's not, it's not your typical recreation facility, right? There's a, a group out there that needs a place, that absolutely needs a place to go, and they're not being, you know, asked to leave, or they're getting in the way of, you know, patrons and things like that. So that's really kind of what's driven this group for a long time, so.
And those are the needs that have changed since the original plan as well. And so taking that, I know this has, this is a live, you know, this is, and this project is alive.
Yep.
So it's still kind of in the making.
Yeah.
And so that is also something to consider going forward with space, and then what this is actually going to look like. I had one more, and now it's gone. So we'll see if it comes back after we come back from the public.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yep.
Just going to ask.
Yeah. Hey, I just want to say thank you to Escalon Park Foundation for continued efforts, your tenacity and your willingness to not give up on the project. And thank you all for, for the efforts year after year, and reaching your fundraising goal, and being able to present us with something that we can give to the youth of Escalon. Greatly appreciated, something we, we need here in town. You know, not to be like cliche, but, you know, build it and they will come, right? I think if we get this initial part done, the other parts will fall in place. And I really believe in the proposed location as it really lends to the future expansion of Hogan Ennis Park and what our future of recreation looks like in Escalon. So thank you guys very much for everything that you've done over the last, over, you know, decade. It's, it's appreciated.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just a couple. Thank you very much for coming out tonight, all of you. Appreciate all, all you guys being here. And I appreciate all the years that you guys have dedicated to fundraising for something, especially with it being so slow. I'm sure that that had to have been very disheartening for you guys to continue on. This is something that I was asked a ton of questions about, and as much as I hate to admit that I'm ignorant on a subject, my answer was, I have no idea. My first question for you is, do you guys have regular meetings of any kind, aside from your one annual meeting?
Yeah, so they've, it's become as needed. And it's usually right before the fundraising season, so I think April-ish, we'll usually have one to kind of line things up. And then at the end of the fundraising period. So that's kind of how it's kind of filtered out after COVID and stuff.
You guys invite the public to them at all?
Yeah, they're open. They're open.
Any, any announcements sent out or anything, anything like that? Any announcements sent out, you know, Facebook, you know?
You know, we, we used to do it on Facebook.
Smoke signals, anything like that?
I think, I think Facebook was the primary way to go, but I, I would like to post them out here, or, you know, send them through to the city manager and, and, you know, allow people to get more involved that way.
Yeah, the, I mean, the more that we could, you know, attract them just to your guys' meetings, I feel like the, you know, the better the fundraising would go, the more involvement we would get in, in the subject, you know, instead of everybody kind of feeling like, yeah, I gave, I gave 20 bucks to this thing when I was 16 and, you know, never saw any, anything on my return, and I don't know what happened to the money, you know?
Yep.
And so I, I mean, I would be, you know, absolutely supportive of that going into, you know, our, you know, bi-monthly flyer, you know, newsletter that goes out from the city, you know, when, when you're holding those meetings to, you know, tell the public, hey, you know, EPF is having, you know, their, their meeting to, you know, you can go sit in on this and ask any questions about this that you may be curious about. I skated quite a bit when I was young. I'm definitely not getting on a skateboard anymore. But looking at, you know, the shape of the bowl, really what I see there is you, you have three different areas that, you know, that, you're not going to have one person using this thing at a time, the way that you would a strict bowl. Typically what happens is your beginners kind of start in the bottom, and they work their way up the edges, and as they get more and more comfortable with, with turning around, they get a little faster, and hopefully they're wearing knee pads and a helmet, because it hurts when you fall. You know, what I, what I see there is a good opportunity for, you know, two or three kids to, to be skating this simultaneously. I like your, your idea of, you know, get something in the ground and see if, you know, see if it picks up the momentum on, on the fundraising and, you know, donations and, and that sort of thing. Hundred percent agree. As far as location, I'm sure that we're going to, we're going to have a discussion about that here shortly, so I'll just keep my thoughts to myself on that for now. But again, really appreciate you coming out, and that was really, you know, what I just wanted to know, is how, how do we get, you know, the public more involved, you know, help you guys get the public more involved? Because I feel like the more that they knew, the easier it would be for you to fundraise and, and get this ball moving a little bit faster.
Yeah, yeah, agreed. Thanks.
Thanks again for coming out.
Thank you.
Last questions before we go to the public?
Yeah, I have.
I got additions.
Excuse me. I would like to answer, ask my question. Will you please? So my question is, when was the last time a survey was done to see if there was truly a need for a skate park by the community?
We'd, we were put in a position to do a survey back in 2015 or 2016 with the, again, trying to decide if we were going to use city rec money to, to build a skate park. And that's, the survey went out, and it was the bathrooms were number one, overflow parking was number two, and then the skate park. So we haven't done a survey. This has all been just continuing on the fundraising and listening to people that are coming and talk with us.
Because I see an interesting dichotomy going on here. I mean, I feel like you guys are really, you want to deliver.
Yep.
Totally, and I totally respect that, I totally appreciate that. My concern is, do we have the volume of kids and young adults within the city of Escalon that will truly use a skate park? And so I did a little informal poll with some students from El Portel recently, and I said, so how many kids do you see riding skateboards? And the answer I got back was zero. And so I would hate for an investment of $125, or $125,000 for it to sit with minimal use. That's, that's my concern. I mean, I applaud, as Councilmember Ingles said it, I applaud every, you guys were out there every Fourth of July, every park feet, trying to push this vision. My concern is, is there truly still a need in the community for a skate park? I don't know.
Yeah, based on the years we've been at it, I, I believe there is.
Can I ask something? In just a sec.
I, I think it, as, I mean, there are several examples, you can go, you know, you don't have to drive very far to, to see, you can go over to Oakdale. And I've passed by Oakdale's actually pretty frequently, Riverbank, same thing, I've passed by there, you know, pretty frequently. Is there 100 kids out there, you know, skateboarding at a time? No, you don't see that at any skate park. And I would say even, you know, late 90s and early 2000s, when, you know, the extreme sports were really, really big, you still didn't see that number. But I think that there's still regular use at those. And I think that you would see regular use here. I, I absolutely do. You know, whether it's five kids that get really into it, or, you know, and you see the same five kids there for several years in a row, you know, but it will probably expand over time. And I think that you'll see kind of a rotation of, you know, but, but again, you know, these are kids that typically aren't playing on our football teams and playing on our baseball teams, not necessarily participating in regular sports. And this is a great opportunity for them to have somewhere that they can go do this safely, and as Mayor Protim stated, not be run off for tearing up curbs and sidewalks and benches, and that never happened with me, I promise.
Protim, do you have a question?
So I have asked several times since 2014 to be, to help and to be able to go to these meetings. And I did ask the former president about these meetings, and was told that they are not open to the public, and that, no, we don't have meetings that you can attend. So I'm really glad that, that is not now the case.
Yep, you're absolutely invited.
You know, from the bylaws that I have, I don't think they're the updated ones.
Right.
Are they on file at your principal office?
Yes.
And then is your principal office still chambers? Because that's what I have in your bylaws, but chambers has changed. So where would your principal office be?
It's on country wood. Tom Murphy is our board member, he's our CPA, and he maintains all those records.
Okay. And will we be able to receive a copy of the current bylaws? Is that something that you could share with city manager, and then we can go ahead and get a current copy?
Bet.
Awesome.
Any other questions up here? I will go out to the public. Any questions for EPF?
What's the total amount of money needed to finish this project?
We're only operating off of the $125,000 budget that we had to deliver the bowl.
So you do have projections on to finish it?
So the, the only other site that we looked at and had them give us a number on was the lower left-hand corner there. It was $125,000 for 2,000 square feet of park space.
Okay. Is this, has the city put forth any money towards this? I keep hearing we are spending, but it sounds like this is coming completely from the public and private donations, correct?
Yeah, this is all money that's been raised privately.
So my confusion is, it sounds, some of you are making it sound as if this is a financial burden on the city, which clearly it's not. I happen to have a 13-year-old son who does skateboard with his friends, and we live right across from El Portel. So I think your information may have been given by the wrong group of kids, maybe that don't skate. I understand your concern about younger or intermediate to beginner versus more advanced. My question, Chief Hargraves, what is the current municipal code or law for the kids skateboarding on the sidewalk?
They can't skateboard on public driveways.
Okay, so they shouldn't be in the street either?
Correct.
And are they, do we know, are they allowed to be in the school after hours in the parking lots?
That would be private property, the school does not allow that.
So the place my child has to skate, and he skates in all of those places, he has to skate in my driveway, which he's 13, seems more reasonable for a younger intermediate, or, or, excuse me, beginner to be skating than putting them out in a place where a more advanced kid, just my thought. The fireworks booth for this year, were you guys able to run a booth? I heard that there was some controversy, or there were fees that you had to pay, or some city rumors, and I just want to clarify if you did in fact get a booth.
We, we did get a booth, and we were one of the three booths in town, and we had, we had a really good year of fundraising.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
All right. Excuse me, any other questions? Okay.
Again, from me, it's going to be a, oops, it's going to be a comment. Okay, is that better?
That's right.
Okay, okay. From my perspective, being in the senior group, okay. From my perspective, I think going for the older kids and the intermediate is the way to go. We don't have a whole lot to offer our kids here. And I believe with all of my heart that there are quite a few youth in our town that are looking forward to this. Some of them walk past my house every day to and from school. And I think that once you build it, and it's there, and the older ones are, you know, there, there's, there's kids that are using it, young adults that are using it, probably some parents that are using it maybe still, you know? Hopefully they'll wear their helmets and their elbow pads too. Anyway, protect themselves. That there will be more of an interest from the community to get more sidewalk out there, more, you know, pavement out there for the younger ones to be involved. I personally, if I had a beginner, I want him in my driveway. I don't want him at a skate park until they're confident, until there's older kids maybe that are, are young adults that are out there and know what they're doing, and then they can help the younger ones along. So I think the plan is really, really good and really sound, and I'd like to see it go forward. Just a thought and an idea as far as community, there's a Facebook page, I know Facebook is a love-hate relationship with me, but there is a residence page, and maybe putting it on there, and then from the residence page, man, that it goes like wildfire, so people would hear about that. Anyway, keep up the job. I like the plan, and I think going for our older kids would be a nice thing for them to actually see some fruition, because some have already outgrown it and have become adults now and haven't been able to use it, so, thank you.
Any other questions for EPF?
Sorry, I never get up at the stairs, but to piggyback off of the relevancy of the skate park's existence, would you guys allow bikes and scooters and all of that as well?
Roller skates.
Roller skates?
Yeah, I, I think that'll be kind of the city's call, how they want to operate it. The roller blades, I think, are pretty common in the skate parks and all. I don't know about bikes for this design. We had looked at like additional pump tracks and things like that, but for, for this first feature, I don't know, it would be a call of the city if they want to regulate the different uses.
I know Modesto's had both.
Yes.
Especially when I was younger, and that was like the thing to do.
Absolutely.
So to have the BMX and the skateboards all going.
Exactly.
That was my question.
Exactly, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I would also like to echo my appreciation for all of those who are involved in this project. I've gone after projects, I've been passionate myself, so I understand where they're coming from, and, and I applaud them for them. This was a contentious issue, you know, six years ago, and I do not come here to be contentious. But I am going to ask the questions to the city manager. This project died six years ago, about this time of year, because no MOU was signed with the Escalon Park Foundation. Have they signed it since?
An MOU has not been brought forward or executed at this time?
Well, that's why the thing died, because the city was not going to be stuck with the bill for it. So have all the documentation here. So, have all the documentation here, you need to go back, you're getting ahead of yourselves, talking about citing. The citing was removed because of the lack of communication from the Escolon Park Foundation to the city in regards to the MOU. The MOU has some pretty finite stuff in here, what's got to be done, who's responsible for it, no phasing unless it's been approved by the council. And the council's not going to do that until they show that they can fund this whole park. Again, I don't want to be contentious here, I appreciate all the effort there, but good governance dictates it's a city protect itself. If you get started and you, they say we can't, we're not getting grants, nobody's supported it up to this point, who's going to get stuck with completion or demolition? It's a city. And you're not going to be spending in-kind fees, you're going to be paying prevailing wages to go one way or the other. You're looking at a significant closure cost on this park. Again, I don't have a dog in this race. I hope somebody comes forward, Hogan, maybe even Leggero's would like to throw a bunch of cash into this thing, and, you know, it gets, it gets done. But, the MOU's got to come first, Jalen. You've got to go back to September, October, and November of the city council meetings in 2019. In 2000, in November of 2019, item number 12 was the last, this issue was brought up. And I can, I can read to you, oh, by the way, here, there was a citing that was given at the time, this was back in 2016, this was denied by that council because the MOU was not signed. So, let me just read to you, and then I'll leave. It was moved and seconded by Alves and Merkin that the mayor and the city manager sign the memorandum of understanding and send it to the Escolon Park Foundation for signature. If the memorandum of understanding is not received back, signed by the next city council meeting December 2nd, 2019, the current designation in the Hogan's master plan will no longer be valid. Or nothing, unanimous. So that's the previous councils, look at it and see, you're talking about benches and, you know, things that have come after a bowl. You need to get your MOU signed and make sure you know who's responsible for what, so the city isn't on the tab for it. All I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Any other questions or statements? Okay, then we'll bring it back. Any other questions up here?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I do. Jalen, in regards to the MOU, we just heard Mr. Danzinger say, in regards to the site that was designated on the master plan back in 2019, but this isn't the same proposed site, is that correct?
Correct, it is not the same proposed site because the proposed site currently has overflow parking on it.
Mr. Leggero, do you have an update for the MOU?
Yeah, so, the MOU back then had a number of conditions in it, bathroom upgrades, ADA compliance and things like that. So, it never got off the ground because the project never had the funding. So, I did prepare an MOU, a draft MOU for Jalen to take a look at, it's much more streamlined, based on the realities of the situation currently. That is the next step, if we have a location, and then we can continue the design work on that, and then it's an MOU. And hopefully we'll be able to, to hammer out the MOU relatively quickly, because a lot of the things that were part of that original MOU have been already upgraded out there. So, thanks.
Any other question? Any other questions?
Can I follow up on that?
Yeah, that's fine, I'll let.
Sorry, I'm just going to address what he just said. You don't need to change the MOU, that was the problem back in 2019. There was a resubmital by Jeff and Ann Cipriol with BBK that didn't go through staff, where they tried to change the wording of the MOU to make it a joint city and EPF project. That was turned down. And if that comes to you, Jalen, you need to turn that down too. There is an MOU that, it's, it's out there, you don't need to make a new one, just review it, and if they sign it, they sign it. If they don't, you're done. So, you don't need to sign, get a new MOU, you already have one, unless you bring it in front of the council and they want to change it.
Any other questions? Alrighty.
I just have one comment. If we enter into an MOU with the EPF and we go ahead and have this bowl built and installed, regardless of anything, that is a complete feature and a complete park. This isn't, it, it doesn't mean that this entire park has to be built, that would be a complete usable feature. I can't come up with a reason in the world that we would ever go back and demolition that, drill it up. If, if we're making a usable feature here, hopefully by the end of next year, I'm assuming is, is your timeline on this, I don't see any reason why we would ever go back and demolish that. I don't see where the city would be on the hook for anything additional, that would all be discussed as it went along. And I'm sure that, well, he's an attorney, so I can only trust him so far, Mr. Leggero in his MOU probably has outlined all of these steps as they go along, and I'm sure that our city attorney will do a great job of crossing the Ts and dotting the Is. I just wanted to.
I guess we'll move on if there's no other questions. Just want to thank you for coming in. You know, I do a lot of fundraising as well, and it takes a lot of effort, and you're not always going to get a pat on the back, it is what it is. So we do appreciate you putting that time in for the community. Would you like to make any last statement before we move on?
Yeah, that's, I appreciate those comments, and thank you, yeah, it's been, you know, really this group over here that's put, you know, the bulk of the time in and stuff, so I really appreciate the work that they put into it. So, thank you.
All right. I'll go on to staff communications and updates.
We'll start on that side of the table.
For me, all right. Good evening, everyone, mayor, council members. For finance, we have just a few updates. We had a nice productive Measure P onboarding meeting, I thought it went really well. We took a little bit more time than we had allotted, but we went through quite a few topics. So that was great, much like the council onboarding, we went through everything. We recently closed July, we're getting closer to closing the, the last year that we just finished in June. Our software allows us to go through September, although it starts to kind of bog down, so staff is looking at getting that closed. And then we'd be prepared to move that on to the auditors who currently have our last year's audit in process. I just spoke with them today, and they have come through a couple different hurdles that they had, getting that data back from the, the last auditor. So, again, slow, but it's moving along.
Okay.
And I've got that, I'm just on our audits. We're also in the middle of the transit audit right now too, which is wrapping up. We'll probably have a few more in-person meetings with them, unless I can get them to do it by video, which would be much faster.
Any questions for finance? No? Okay.
But that's what we have.
Chief?
So, we just closed our accepting of application for the police officer position on last Friday. So far, or not so far, but in total, we've gotten 36 applicants for the job. Only 11 of those, however, were either have their basic, or have their post certificate or in the academies, so we do have 11 qualified applicants to interview.
You just say 36?
36 total.
I thought my ears were plugged up for a second.
Last year we had 11.
That's awesome. Any questions for chief? Okay, well, we'll go on to Public Works.
Good evening, Council. Two quick comments, the material for our library roof has came in, and the roof has started as of last week getting installed, so hopefully that gets wrapped up here soon. And this Wednesday is the last farmer's market on Main Street Park, so I hope to see everybody out and hope they can make it out on Wednesday. That's it for Public Works this evening.
Any questions for Public Works?
Just real quick, update maybe on the timeline or how it's going on the Yosemite sidewalk project.
So the water line itself is completed, as some of the residents will see, the road has been open for school and all that during the day. They're currently working on the sidewalk now. We're foreseeing into September 1st of October, depending, depending on anything else that kind of occurs, but most likely beginning of September, that job will be completed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions at all? Okay, well, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor, a couple items. We did have a question from a council member last meeting about the cost of a HOCS system. A HOCS system is an enhanced lighting feature that is supposed to protect pedestrian safety. We've done a cost estimate on that, and it's about $400,000 across 120 at Elizabeth. So that's the, the cost of that system. Last meeting, also, we received direction from council to explore installing swing sets at Swanson Park. Staff is looking into that and expect to bring something before the council probably in September. We'll also mention that we have scheduled the first economic development committee meeting for August 26th at 5:30, I believe, so just FYI for the first economic development committee meeting. And then, in terms of public infrastructure, we are having conversations with Unwired. Unwired is a company, a private company that installs fiber broadband, high-speed internet with fiber. They are looking at this area, they're also looking at Oakdale to install a project. We are working with them very closely to try to do everything we can, if we move forward with such a project, to minimize the impact to residents and infrastructure. So we're working on that and likely expect to bring some level of discussion forward to the council in the coming weeks. And then something else we believe we will bring before the council, council on the budget did approve a pay-down plan for our purse liability. We will bring a document which kind of lays out exactly what that pay-down plan looks like. So we'll bring that forward in the next couple of meetings as well.
I had just one mention, I think it was mentioned also about benches for the seniors. Did we get anything on that yet?
The benches throughout the community for the seniors?
Yeah, I think, I know, I know Public Works had talked about it also.
Yeah, so we are continuing to look at that, kind of the where and the how much and how those are funded.
Okay, thank you.
You should ask the Lions Club.
Wink, wink.
Just saying, you should ask the Lions Club.
Any other questions?
Maybe the swings too?
You never know.
I'm just saying.
Can I, can I address the president of the Lions Club from up here?
No.
Alrighty then, any questions from public for our staff? Okay, we'll go on to our next step, which is the matters presented from the audience. The public may address city council on any item that is on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the city council on any item not on the agenda that is within the subject matter of City of Escolon. Each speaker is limited to a max of five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. You may state your name and address for the record, however, it is not required. Due to state law, action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda. And except for brief responses, the council is prohibited from discussing any item not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. The determination of whether an item is within the subject matter of the city is a discretionary decision made by the mayor. At this point, do we have any comments or questions?
Just the sprinklers in the different parks, are those checked to see if they're working or going in the right direction? Swanson Park last night, you have one that's hitting the pole and pretty much going in the street, and then you have one that's almost aimed at somebody's driveway. I think they might have gotten stuck.
Okay, yeah, we'll have to check that out.
Also, do you know if, they're doing work at 120 and McHenry, that side there, I don't know if it's the railroad or, you know what it is?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I got asked that question a couple hours before the meeting, so I've got to look into it.
It's like the end, something.
They've got a lot of lighting in the area as well too, so to be honest with you, I'm not quite sure, but I will be finding out fairly quickly.
So, just so you know, last night, the crosswalk is not working. I mean, it was like 2:00 in the morning, we were riding, and it wasn't going on.
Which one?
Like the light wasn't.
On 120?
Yeah, and the guy said that they had it powered off or something, so just a safety issue. The, not just to stop the crosswalk, but the light itself was green in the, in the east and westbound direction.
Okay.
So, I don't know.
Okay, I'll take a look at it.
You're aware of that, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Question for Sylinda, Sylinda, sorry. We have rate increases for 10 years for water, to rehabilitate the system, to put in a well, and to start funding the water line from SSAID to Escolon. My question is, since we're not increasing rates anymore, were they sufficient? Are we continuing to build a capital reserve to complete that project?
May I answer directly?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
We do have some funds available for those projects, and those funds are going to build up before that project even begins. If you take a look at this particular form in the, in the packet, it'll give you some breakdown of water.
Your stuff is eye-burning. The question is, are we continuing to see increases in our reserve because of those increases in the rates for that project?
We are, but I do believe that there is some timing where we're going to be doing some different rate increases at some point. There was, there was built-in rate increases, and we're coming up upon that. So I don't, I don't under, I don't totally agree with the no-rate increases. I think we have a built-in, was it 2026?
You're talking previous council?
I probably have to look at it and see exactly what it is. I don't want to misspeak and give the wrong, wrong year.
I think previous council.
Could you bring it back for next meeting?
Yeah, let's, let's bring that back for next.
Increases for the next few years, yeah.
But we, we do have reserves in there that are building now, they're, they're earning interest, we're socking away money for those projects. It's not something that we're going to start next week or anything, so those funds are still building up.
I was just curious to see if we're staying even, losing money, or actually gaining towards that project.
The reserve is building. And I believe, I have to go look at this though, I believe that there is a rate increase built into that paperwork. I haven't gotten a chance to study all of those things yet, to see what's.
Well, the rate increases have stopped as of 2024. There were, there were two five-year periods where the city council had approved rate increases, but those ended, and we didn't go after and start up another round. So that was a 218 vote that, that powered that, so.
Well, I'll have to get back to you on that with a, with a solid answer.
Last question, then I'm gone. $15,000 for text messages between city attorney and Harrison Associates. Did any of you ask for those text messages? And are they part of the Harris report?
You want to speak to that?
I, I don't know the reference to text messages. There were, there was a considerable amount of work done on the legal side, in somewhat because of the questions that we received. And I'll just piggyback this response to the last question. Our new team with the budget, the last two budgets that have, you know, now been balanced, audits, rates, capital improvement projects and funds that we have available, we are digging deep into these issues to try to discover exactly where we are on all these issues. It's a work in progress, no doubt. We may not be able to answer every question immediately. It is a continued work in progress, we continue to make progress, but there's still some work to do for sure. As I mentioned, going back to the most recent question, there was considerable amount of, of time spent on the legal side, on noticing improvements, questions about the reports and changes and, and all of those, and it did take some coordination between our legal counsel and our consultant. And we have all seen those costs, those costs have been shared in, in the budget as well as the LLD reports. And that is, you know, that's where those costs come from.
Well, that's nice, but I didn't even answer my question. Let's, let's go back to the question. There was communications between the city and Harrison, Harrison and the city. That cost $15,000. That's public information. Where is it? Is that part of the Harris report? Or is that going to be online submitted so we can review what, what the actual conversation was and what questions you were actually answering?
I believe we'll have to find them for you, but. I believe we'll have to find them for you, but I'll make sure it gets done.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. And if we need to get a Freedom of Information Act request, that's fine, too. Just let me know. Thank you.
Conversations with legal are generally protected from the Freedom Act and because there's matters that may be sensitive. If there's any, you know, questions on the communications, we can certainly, you know, bring those up. If the council has asked questions, there's certainly nothing to hide. As I just mentioned, there was a significant amount of legal work done to look into noticing and questions about the report, case law, those types of things that were raised during the discussions for the item.
I, I think he's generally asking, did we pay 15, at least I'm not 100% sure, but did we pay 15,000 for the text messages? Or is that somehow included in the communications? Like what is that, you know, I guess what that money's involving? Is that what you're asking?
I'd just like to be able to get in totality all of the communication. Those questions that were asked were asked a long time ago. Instead of answering them, not here, they had their own communications. I'd just like to see it.
Okay.
I think, I think we're all entitled to see it. And since you put the burden on the LMD property owners, we're all, that's not.
I hear you. Any other, you had a question, right? Okay. Do you want to say anything before we go back out?
Nothing, Dad.
Okay. We'll look into it for you. Anyone have something out there they'd like to speak to?
Oh, I'm sorry you guys are going to be here late. I'm going to go home early tonight. So this is a crazy week. It's a busy week we have tonight. And then Wednesday is good old farmer's market, last one. See y'all out there. But tomorrow, there's a really big important thing happening at our state capitol. It's called AB 495. And it does pertain to Escalon because it pertains to our children and it pertains to our schools. And I would hope that there's more than just, I got wind that there's a bus from one of our churches going. I hope that there's a whole lot of cars going, too. My car's leaving early so I can find a spot, hopefully far enough away so that the multitudes of people that shut down the streets, I can get out early. But I would hope that if you haven't looked at that, that you would. It would affect your children, my grandchildren, some great-grandchildren, our community. It affects the whole state. It's a stupid bill. But anyway, get involved, and I hope more people get involved like we are here. So anyway, that's it. That's all I had. Thanks. Good night.
Anyone else? Councilman Bellinger?
X, but thank you. Public Works. Just real quick on First and Oklahoma at the stop sign. That tree's one step from dead, but it does need to be trimmed. If you don't know that there's a stop sign there, when you're going down First Street, if you don't, if it's your first time down there, you're going to run that stop sign.
Okay.
If you can't see it until you're on top of the intersection, if somebody can trim that back.
Okay, thank you.
I think that tree really needs to be killed, but nonetheless. The next question is for the council. Three to four years ago, we had the project set up for the downtown park. We have the money set up with SJCog. When are we going to start to put sidewalks from First and Main all the way out to St. John? That's the question. I don't need an answer right now, but I want you to put it on your radar, please. We've had the money set up for that long enough. Sidewalks need to go. It seems like we're kicking the can down the road for no apparent reason. At some point in time, don't know where SJCog is going to be with forgiveness of, we're way past their timeline for when they want us to spend those monies. We don't want them to claw it back and give it to another town. So hopefully, Jeremy, you're staying on top of that with those folks to keep us the money for our town.
Will do.
But yeah, if we can see some notes sometime in the next couple of meetings on when we might see some progress or action on that, that'd be great.
Sounds good.
I can provide an answer.
You have an answer?
So we have modified the project. We have coordinated with SJCog. The project is finalized, is through design. We are now waiting just for the busy season to conclude in the park and near the park. So we expect to construct in January through March, and we will go out to bid, we think, in the next month or so on that project.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question they want to bring up? Alrighty, we'll bring it back to the dais. Any other things you'd like to say and anything online? Okay, we'll go to our next step here. Number six, I believe, because there's no public hearings.
Correct. Thank you, Mayor. We're now going back to the SSJID topic. This item was actually mentioned in the presentation by the presenter. This is an MOU between the city and South San Joaquin Irrigation District, SSJID, essentially regarding payment of in lieu, payments in lieu of franchise fees. And so the gist of it is, the city does currently receive franchise fees from PG&E for the service. If SSJID were to take over the service, they, through this MOU, would commit to make the city whole in terms of those franchise fees. So there'd be no net revenue loss to the city. They would make that up in, in these payments. This is largely symbolic but important. As was mentioned during the presentation, there would be more formal agreements when this moved forward, as we start to understand what it looks like, the timing, the cost, all of those things. This item is to, one, show support from the city in SSJID's efforts, but to acknowledge that SSJID will commit to ensuring that the city is, is not out funds. So happy to answer any other formal questions that the council may have. And of course, SSJID is here to answer those questions as well.
Any other questions up here regarding this? No?
I do have one. Michelle, can you scroll back down to the bullet point at the top? I think we said item six. No, right, right here is perfect. Regarding payments from SSJID in lieu of franchise fees. So essentially, they would just cut a check. It wouldn't be a franchise fee anymore? And, and can you explain to me what the difference there is for both parties?
Yeah, and maybe SSJID can explain further, but yes, there would be a, a payment essentially in lieu of franchise fees. This did sound like there was going to be a franchise fee component as well in this.
Right, so, hi, good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Katie Patterson. I'm the Public and Government Relations Manager with SSJID. So the franchise would still exist, right? This is for permissive use of those, those areas to be able to wield that power to those residents. But really what this is, is one of our LAFCO conditions was that 2.5% of our revenue would be shared amongst the cities in our jurisdiction and also the county, San Joaquin County. So as part of this is, you know, the, the first step of our intent to work with one another on hashing out what those details will be into the future. But it's a good faith measure to the courts to show them that we have strong relationships in our communities and we're ready to take those pathways forward to get to those agreements, the frequency, the final amounts, et cetera. So this is what this MOU will set us on track to do. And we've done this with San Joaquin County in December of last year. And just a few months ago, we passed one with the city of Manteca.
And just to be clear, we're just not going to call it a franchise fee anymore, but you guys are still going to cut us a check for the same amount of money in basic terms?
We will share that 2.5% across the cities, yes.
All right. Appreciate it.
Can I ask a quick question? So you're saying, just so I'm got it clear, you've got a franchise fee plus the divvying up to 2.5%. So is it franchise fee that's a wash?
It's in lieu of, yes, in lieu of, yes.
And then the 2.5% is above that?
No, the 2.5% of revenue that SSJID earns.
So you're washing it.
Will then, yes, be redistributed. Whereas you would receive that from PG&E initially, the 2.5% will be that fund source that we use to then, you know, make those, those cities whole.
Gotcha.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions up here?
Thanks, Katie.
Welcome.
So for city staff, this does not commit us to SSJID yet, but this is if we do go into contract with SSJID, then this is one of the understandings. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so in the future, hopefully. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
May I, sorry, I, I was trying to speak earlier, but I wasn't, I didn't know how to unmute myself. I apologize. Good evening, council. Frank Slidero joining remotely. I just wanted to mention, we did review the MOU and we did propose a few changes just to kind of clarify some things, not major. But because this document's been approved by the other parties, they really don't have the chance to change it. But that being said, some of the things that have been mentioned by Jalen and others, this is an MOU, and I would kind of look at it as a letter of intent. And if and when we have the, the, really the privilege of actually having SSJID provide retail electric service in the city four, five, six years from now, we would provide, we would enter into a formal agreement that would provide a lot more robust protections and information. But I just want to provide that context for you. This is, this is similar and akin to a letter of intent.
So is this, would this be binding then or for, for our relationship in the future, five or six years down the road that we, not that we want to, I'm just devil's advocate, not that I want to stay with PG&E necessarily, but is this binding that we, once we are making an understanding that we are switching over to SSJID once we are able and everything has been put in place?
The intent behind what was just described from on high, thank you.
You're right.
That intent is just saying that we will come together and we'll have those discussions. And whether we are able to reach agreement on, on what those are to the satisfaction of both parties is yet to be determined, but it's our hope that we'll be able to get there in the future.
This is more of a support letter to show the courts that you have people that are interested.
The courts, our community, the PUC as well.
Gotcha. Any other questions up here? Okay.
I do, so.
No problem.
Yeah, so does this disclude any other organizations? I mean, we are committing to SSJID, correct? Instead of other public utilities as well?
Think loosely.
Loosely.
Not, not like a direct contract, but.
We have, we have LAFCO approval to provide power. And so we're working through that, through the courts for the taking of the system and through the CPUC to review that as well. And so once those things, those processes are, are a go, and once we are granted that ability to do it, we would be negotiating because PG&E would no longer be providing that utility service to you. And SSJID would be the only utility service that you would have.
Okay. Thank you.
So you're taking MID?
Right.
No.
No.
And thank you for the caveat. We are not, we are not replacing MID customers. They will be maintained with MID.
Okay, and there isn't a potential of MID taking over the lines that instead SSJID is, correct? Like that's not a possibility that it ends up being MID instead of SSJID? Is that not a?
That is not the intent of, of either of the two public power agencies at this point in time.
It would likely take them a 20-year process, just like SSJID, to try and do the same thing.
There's processes that SSJID is going through. They have received sort of local approval at the LAFCO level to be the provider in this area. If, I mean, I don't, I don't even want, I don't know how to answer this question. I think if MID were to even put, you know, a horse in the race sort of thing, they would have to do catch-up.
All right.
To get to where SSJID was right now.
And perhaps to put a different flavor on it, we work very cooperatively with Modesto Irrigation District, so there's a lot of communication back and forth. And there's been a lot of conversations about what our project looks like in areas where they could actually help us in our project. So we don't see it as a competing factor with Modesto Irrigation District, but one that where, as public agencies, we're able to support each other.
Okay.
Any other questions before we go to public? All right, we'll take it out to the public and any questions at all?
My name is Sheila Walton. I would hope that you would bear with me just a little bit and allow me to make a few comments. I know that you allowed Mr. Rieker to make a couple comments on our negotiations, and I'm not here to go into any specifics about what's going on, so I'd appreciate if you give me a little bit of time.
Is it, is it in regards to the city of Escalon?
Yes, because we represent your constituents. We have a number of people that work.
Are you a constituent?
I am not, but I know I'm allowed to speak here.
Well, if it's in, has to do with our city.
I know I'm allowed to speak here, right?
Not, not in this regard.
Okay, well, I'm speaking to this MOU.
Okay, you can speak to the MOU.
And that I would wonder why the city would be, why SSJID would be so eager for you to enter into an MOU that is going to be years in the making if they even get to acquire PG&E's assets. The two final hurdles they must go through are going to take years. So I would question why it is that you would enter into something so soon when you're looking at a year, years of time before that's even going to happen. They've already been at it for 20-something years at the cost of $35 million to its rate payers. That in itself should be concerning. And in that $35 million has been off the backs of their employees. So I would respectfully ask that you really consider whether or not this is the right time to enter into that MOU with the district.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak to the MOU? All right, we'll bring it back to the dais. Anyone online?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to adopt a memorandum of understanding between the South San Joaquin Irrigation District and the City of Escalon regarding payments from SSJID in lieu of franchise fees from PG&E for retail electric service.
Can I make a comment before we go forward?
Uh, yeah.
I know that Frank had suggested that he had some changes to make to the MOU. Should we consider those changes before?
I would say, yeah.
Going forward with this?
Yeah, I think it would be wise. We have time, so.
Frank is on, he can speak to those, I believe.
Yeah, I, what I, what I, what, sorry, what I meant to say was, I had, there were a few clarifications that I would have wanted to make, but they weren't significant. And they structurally, they can't be made at this time because the agreement has already been ratified by a couple of the other agencies. And obviously, they have to enter into an agreement that is on identical terms with all the parties. So I was fine with that in my legal judgment, especially because they were relatively minor and because of the fact that this is essentially an agreement to explore and enter into a subsequent agreement if the parties agree at a later date. So with that being said, hopefully that clarifies.
So you're saying this is amendable?
Well, yeah, you're going to enter into a, a, an actual formal agreement if and when SSJID eventually provides retail electricity to the city. So this is just a, like I said, a letter of intent. And frankly, in my opinion, I think this agreement is more necessary for purposes of their right to take a trial that's coming up next year in their eminent domain matter than it is for anything else. So my recommendation is to approve it as is, and I don't think they're going to make any changes right now.
Okay.
Is there?
I'm sorry, go for it.
Is there like an expiration date on this? And do we need one?
No, well, there, there's a, there's an expiration, I believe, after a certain period of time after retail service starts in the city. So there's, it doesn't, the expiration doesn't get triggered until if and when that contingent event occurs. So in that sense, no, there is no expiration date.
As a point of, geez, what was I going to say? We have a motion, right? So as a point of order, we have a motion on the table. We're having discussion.
We needed a second. Did you want to restate that for you?
Sure. Nothing changes. My motion is to adopt a memorandum of understanding between the South San Joaquin Irrigation District and the City of Escalon regarding payments from SSJID in lieu of franchise fees from PG&E for retail electric service.
I will gladly second that motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, we'll go on to number seven.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The item before you is a continuation of the presentation. We have labeled this as to introduce and discuss potential next steps for the Escalon Skate Park, including potential locations. It has been raised this evening. It has been raised this evening to enter into some MOU. In, in our minds, we're not there yet. This, I don't believe would lock anyone into anything, and I do think EPF has acknowledged and the city has acknowledged that we would need to enter into an MOU to finalize any sort of details on obligations, responsibilities, shared costs, utilities, fees, those types of things. And so, we, city staff certainly acknowledge that the point of this item is to begin the discussions. As you know, we brought EPF to provide a presentation, to the Recreation Commission as well as the City Council, because now they're to a point where they have enough funds to deliver a phase of the project and sort of a wholly inclusive phase of the project. And so, the item today is to stimulate conversation, facilitate conversation on some of the details that would then go into an MOU. And if we get there, you know, then we can bring back an, an MOU at that time. So that is kind of the background. As was mentioned during the presentation, there's a couple of things going on here. They have retained a consultant who has provided them a date. They can share more, but as I understand, the, I don't know, the, the thought behind this date is they are a company who designs and then installs these parks. And they are working on various projects throughout the year. They slot projects so that they can send their crews to the location and finish out the work, the construction work. If the date was not hit, if we didn't hit the December 1st date for any reason, we would, you know, go back in line, or EPF would go back in line, and I don't know what, how long that, that looks like. So, I think, as been shared with me, there's some desire from the EPF group to see if that date can be hit. And so, if possible, they'd like to secure a location. Of course, council has discretion on all of the details associated with that, and if we can get to the point where there is a, a preferred location. So as we go down, we have talked about the bowl. There's a little bit of discussion kind of in the staff report about the bowl, it's been discussed. Then we started to look at potential locations, as was mentioned, since about 2015, and then subsequently in the 2016 Parks Master Plan, the Hogan Expansion Area, the area along McHenry, and if we can go to that slide, it's just a couple, a couple pages down. Master Plan, one more, right there. So in 2016, the council did approve a park master plan for Hogan Park, which includes the 18-acre expansion area to the north of the existing park. As you can see on this exhibit, sort of in the middle, on the right-hand side, there is a large gray area with trees in it, that is a proposed new parking lot. And the inset in the bottom right-hand corner of that parking lot is the proposed, again, and this is a 2016 master plan, that was the proposed skate park location. Subsequently, the city has installed an overflow parking area which consumes or is on top of that proposed location. And therefore, the thought has been from EPF to just move the skate park location to the west. Now again, that's up for discussion tonight. City staff looked at just other possibilities. These are not in order, these are not preferences, these are not anything, they're just, you know, literal options. Option A here, skate, Hogan Park Expansion Area was just discussed. It's been discussed over the years, a location in Main Street Park, as has been recently discussed. BNSF is not fond of any improvements in the park at this time, in case, and this is their words, in case at such time they have to take back the park. They don't want to see our community investing in that park. So there are some significant challenges with that location, including a significant, to the tune of maybe nearly $30,000 for the lease that we currently pay if improvements were made in the Main Street Park. So while, in many regards, that is a very good location, it's an appealing location, there are some fiscal and financial challenges associated with that option, at least right now. It has been brought up kind of through these discussions and in the community, the Nauragui property on First Street. It is about 100 by 100. Right now, it's, I think, 125 by 125, something like that, that, that vacant property. Again, this is not a city-owned property, so there'd be some financial implications potentially associated with securing that location. As also was mentioned, there have been some concerns, as I understand it, and it's been shared with us, with locating a skate park within a community. Just the noise, the usage, the parking, you know, all of those types of things associated with, with park use. So that's, you know, precluded, I think, their real strong look into, say, an option C, and perhaps an option E, which is another city park, whether it be a Brentwood or a Bob and Dean Elise Park, Sanchez Park, Swanson Park, or the like, again, because of those expressed concerns, at least prior. The city does own additional property out on St. John, kind of in the southeast portion of the city. Some potential cons of, of this location is it's a little far-flung from kind of the city proper. It's not built up in any way. It's, it's dirt and it's vacant right now. So there'd be some additional sort of accessories or amenities associated with it, parking, restrooms, those types of things that, you know, would likely be needed for kind of a standalone improvement like this. City owns some additional property on McHenry in front of the lift station. This is directly north of ACE, Strand Hardware ACE. This is a piece of property that the city owns. It would be sized appropriately. There may be some concerns with its proximity to McHenry Avenue. So those are just the options that we could think of to, again, facilitate conversation. These are in no particular order or anything like that, but wanted council and the community to sort of have a, a sense of all the potential options as the council explores this and other facets associated with it. You know, I, I do think staff would be prudent to indicate, and it's been discussed, that this is potentially a fourth of the total park improvements that need to be made here. And, you know, there's a significant timeline. And so, I think the council would be prudent also to think about what that looks like. Do we section off a 100 by 100-foot area with about a quarter of it maybe being built, you know, here in the upcoming months, if the council chooses to move forward? And then sort of what do you do with that surrounding land in the meantime? And what does that timing look like? Or do you look at a smaller footprint and, and, you know, sort of not have the full skate park that has been proposed? Again, staff has, has no preference on these, but I think it'd be prudent for the council to consider those options as well.
How big, are you good?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Can I have you come up, Councilman Ladro, or ex-councilman, sorry? How big is the, the bowl itself?
It's about 1,800 square feet.
Okay. And if you could, in theory, have it on the road, would you rather it be there? I guess my concern is visibility. I don't want it to end up being something in theory that's a real good thing, that gets abused potentially in a negative way. So I like, for example, Oakdale's is really open, they do a great job there, whereas in Riverbank, I've heard of, you know, concerns that have come up there. So I didn't know if that was, you put it there originally because that's the best location, or if, if you were wanting to move it for a reason?
Yeah, they, it seems that either location, either up by Escalon Belota Road, there were pros and cons. The big con was that it's close to the road, and if people, you know, or skateboards are flying out in the street and that type of thing, that was a concern. If you have younger kids, you want to move it deeper into the park, more centrally located. So that, you know, once that overflow parking was built there, you know, it seemed like, okay, don't disrupt the, the overflow parking because that's being used regularly. And you move it back to the west, you can, you know, the park closes at dark, so, and it would be a patrol issue. You've got the overflow parking to come through and be able to, to patrol it, you know, but that's more of a, a police issue. You have plenty of locations to mount cameras out there. Some of the other considerations with some of the other locations, you've got bathrooms, you've got parking, you've got everything there. So, and the city owns it, so.
You guys have any questions before we bring it up to talk?
Well, my, not necessarily for Jeff, actually. I was going to basically ask you the same question as, as Mr. Mayor had just asked. How do you feel about it being placed back off the road? What are your thoughts?
Kind of addressed all the concerns. It would be nice to have it closer to the roadway, so it's easier to do patrols as far as driving by. But as he said, you've got the overflow parking lot, which is going to turn into a parking lot. The main issue would be access. There's, as he said, there's plenty of places to put lights and cameras. We already have cameras out there, so it shouldn't be too difficult to just add additional cameras onto that network. And as long as it's well-lit, where officers are driving by and look down, and then if they see something, just swoop in or just do a walk-through every now and again. There's pros and cons with everything and.
Well, you've, in your opinion, you haven't heard anything from Oakdale ever, right? Because they're right on the road.
Yeah.
Have they ever said anything, or if you've heard of anything?
Not that I've heard.
From, from there? Might be worth asking, but just to see if they've ever had any problems with skateboarders and traffic and stuff. But my assumption is, and it's just an assumption, is if we put a decent fence there, I don't think we'd have to worry about skateboards. We, I recognize the, the parking issue that's there, but I would want to put it where we're going to put it permanently, rather than years down the road having to, to move it. So if we decided on the community center, then my two cents would be, you know, putting it where it's originally laid out on the master plan.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation to council.
Hmm?
And my recommendation is that, quite frankly, I feel like this is being rushed.
And why is that?
Let me explain.
Okay.
So, we're trying to meet a December 5th start date, and we're trying to decide a location, we're trying to review, and the council will obviously have to sign off on the MOU. Then we will have to submit construction documents, we'll have to go through permitting, and we're trying to do all of this in a matter of four months' time. Jalen, right now, if we have a project, any project that goes through plan review, what does that process typically take?
I mean, it varies, but typical turnaround times are 10 to 15 days. If there's back and forth, it takes significantly longer, of course. But we are generally relatively quick to turn things around. I mean, we generally turn things around in a month or so.
So, I, I guess, so first of all, Mr. Ladro, thank you for taking the time to come to council. Same with the rest of the members of EPF. I've been on council for two and a half years, and we have been asking for this meeting for two and a half years. And so, I think we're, I think we can come up with what we anticipate as a proposed location, but I think that MOU is the key. I know that some of you tone Mr. Danzinger out, but honestly, he is 100% spot-on. If you look at the course of previous councils, some of which former members are in the audience tonight, the progression of the MOUs, it doesn't fare well. And so if we start in 2015, when the original MOU was brought before council, that was not passed. And there's something in that MOU that says that EPF was solely responsible for constructing on- and off-site improvement for the skateboard park. That wasn't passed. Then we fast-forward to October 21, 2019, and it was a shared responsibility between the city and the EPF. That was tabled until November of 2019, at which time council sent the MOU to EPF, and there was no communication back from EPF. It was noted that the president of EPF read the email, but it was not exercised. And so, as, as Mr. Danzinger alluded to, it just kind of died. But legally, we have a responsibility to protect the City of Escalon. That's what we're intending to do. And so, while I appreciate the effort to hurry up and decide and go, I think it's important, I mean, you're the attorney, for, for all intents and purposes, and our attorney is on the phone. I think that MOU is the most critical thing that we need to come to an agreement with. I mean, since 2015, it's pretty much decided where the location is. And, and the location is almost, in my opinion, a formality. Whether it's along the road or whether it's back, chances are, really strong chance, it's going to be at the park. I think the biggest thing that we need to address as a council and as EPF, if we're going into this agreement, we need to have a legal binding document, and that's in the form of an MOU.
So, I do think that Mr. Danzinger brought up some valid points, so, just so you're aware, I do listen to you. So, otherwise, this is saying introduction, introduce and discuss next steps, so it's not saying specifically we're signing an MOU tonight.
Right, and I guess, I guess that's for, for the purposes of discussion, that's what I'm saying. The next steps should really be looking at the MOU and making sure we're all on the same page with MOU.
That's, that's what I'm thinking is, what we're doing is, by introducing this, we're going to discuss that next step, right?
I ju, I just feel like we're, we're all rushing, trying to meet this December 9th deadline, and.
Does the rest of the council feel the same way?
I do not.
Do, how, how do you feel?
Frank, you on the line?
Yes. Yes, yes.
What, what's your thought on, on that conversation that was just had?
Well, right now, you have a third party that has raised money, but ultimately, none of this, the city holds all the cards, in the sense that if they want to build on public property, they're going to have to get some kind of permit, agreement, approval from the city. They can't do it without anything. They can't just go in the dark of night and start building. So, because our, our, our current laws require permits and approvals from the city if you want to construct on city property. So, that alone, so really, all the money that EPF has fundraised to, to date, has essentially been at their risk, so to speak. The city, people keep talking about protection, we're going to be out to dry, but actually, EPF's the one that is going to be at risk here in terms of, if we want to use development language, because they're the ones raising the money, and they have no entitlements or approvals from the city. So, if we build the MOU today, we don't know any specifics about the project, we don't know. We don't know what the site location is, we don't know what the project looks like, we can't tell, you know, there's nothing. But if they ever want to approve a project and get, to be able to actually break ground, they will require something from the city. And at that point, the city will hold all the cards in terms of an MOU in agreement.
Well, Frank, that's my point, Frank, is like, in order to get to the MOU, we need to come up with a site, right? That the site needs to be dictated in the MOU, correct?
Yeah, and I would just say, as far as a risk goes, there's no risk to the city right now. They're going to have to come to the city at some point if they want to break ground on city property. And at that point, we hold all the cards in terms of what leverage or what we want to put in that MOU. But they're really doing this all at risk.
It kind of makes sense, then, that we need to at least start a discussion to figure out where the site is, so that can be included in the MOU.
What else do you need, Frank, for us to be able to get this to the MOU stage and then be able to amend any, any issues that may be there from the previous councils?
Which comes first, Frank? The MOU or the site determination?
Well, the way I look at this is, is a discussion to get to a MOU. If, if, let's assume this wasn't a city council meeting. Let's assume this was just between staff and the EPF. They would have to discuss what's going to go with an MOU. Is it, what site? What's the project look like? What's the location? What's the minimum contribution requirements of EPF? What's insurance look like? What's indemnification look like? Et cetera. But you have to have those discussions to figure out what the city's deal points are. And again, right now, the city's not at risk because they haven't put any money in, in the pocket of EPF, and they have not, they have not given any approval for them to break ground. So again, we hold all the cards, and so we, we should, the way I look at this is giving your city manager a direction to start to figure out what is going to go into that MOU. I, I do agree that there should be an MOU. I don't agree that you have to do it at this stage, because you need to know what to populate the MOU with, in terms of deal points.
I guess, Frank, what I'm asking for you, direction wise, so we can give direction to Jalen, is we just need to find, at, at this stage, the location. What are the things you need out of us, assuming that we all vote to do that, to get it to the manager, so then we can craft an MOU that can just, that can be brought back to the community?
I need to know what you want the project to look like? What, what is the project? A description of the project? Where is that location? Whether or not the city's going to provide any funding? I need to confirm that the city, a lot of the stuff I'm going to assume, but I need to confirm that the city, they're going to have to go through all of the regular permit approvals of the city, that they are going to be responsible for certain insurance and indemnification of the city. And I want to know, in terms of what the proj, this all relates to the improvement, the construction of the project, but who, who's going to pay for the maintenance of the, of the, of the skate park, too? So, but I would say, among those, probably is the city providing any funding? Um, I assume, and where's the location and what's the project? Those are the three big ones to start. And then, we can come back to the council if we have any more questions.
Okay.
And, and just to add to that, I think something that has materially changed since the last round of MOU discussions is the fact that a full skate park as provided in their plans is not being proposed at this time, right? And so there's a new, new dynamic, a new layer for the council to consider. And, and that goes to Frank's question, that goes to Frank's question about what does the project look like? Is it the full 100 by 100? Are we waiting for EPF or some other group to donate funds to build out the second? Is it just the bowl? I mean, there's, there's a little bit of, of discussion there that defines the project, and then I think an MOU comes back. And, and that was part of the discussion we're hoping to have with, with this group tonight.
Okay. Does that clear things up for everyone? Okay. Did, what were your thoughts? I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I think that it's a little disappointing when there was MOU discussions back in 2019. I think the point was, instead of coming here, coming to staff to negotiate that MOU, which would have been in, in the works, it was, city was kind of ghosted, so to speak. Like, those emails were sent, they were read, and nobody ever got back to us. And I think that's where we're at, is this continuing conversation could have been happening, and we could already have this done where we can get this started. And I think that, that's kind of a feeling that I have, is, is there's a few of those feelings going on, that it, it could have been, and that, when you say, I didn't come to council because there was nothing to say, there was something to say. There was an MOU on the table, and there was, hey, let's negotiate this. So that's where we were at, at that point.
So, let's, let's move forward.
I have a question on the land, piece of land, though. So on this piece on First Street, that 125 by 125 piece across from Elbert, kind of down across, that's, I think, owned by Hashem Naragi. Has anybody, staff or EPF, talked to Hashem on that piece of land? He's kind of the type of person that may want his name on a park or a piece of land or a, you know, a, a good soul to donate or ask, because I, I know he does have several pieces of land. So have we had those conversations with him to see, to see what his take is on this?
Uh, we haven't, because we don't have the money to purchase it, and I don't think he'll donate it. We've been operating on the master plan and going forward with the, oh, the Paulus property out there, the additional 18 acres. That was going to be where we, we were going to go. So, and the fact that we've been fundraising, we haven't been able to fundraise money to go out and purchase a, a piece of property, but, you know, that, we've always been under the oppression for the last 10 years or so, that, that the overflow, the additional park space is where it was going to go, because the city owned it.
Well, there's, I, I understand your understanding. There's been plenty of people, myself included, speaking out against that piece of property for this location. So I know that it wasn't agreed upon by everybody, but it was an understanding, at least from the master plan.
Yeah.
Has staff reached out at all?
Staff has not reached out on that location.
Any other thoughts on location up here?
Well, like, kind of like the, the idea of, of that piece of Naragi property, you know, being a skate park. It seems like a really good location. You drive down First Street, it's right there on, you know, the side of the road, right next to the middle school. Middle schoolers and high schools are, schoolers are going to be, you know, your primary, you know, users of a skate park. It's also surrounded by houses. And, I mean, as I said, I used to skateboard. It does get quite noisy. I can't imagine working a night shift, you're trying to sleep, and you've got a bunch of teenagers, you know, hanging out, you know, right there across the street in that neighborhood. That piece of property is also not regular residential property, right? It's a multi-use, uh, family property. I have a feeling that it is probably worth a little more money than we are anticipating that it is worth after seeing weeds grow on it for the last 20 years. So I highly doubt that that is something that is going to be donateable or purchasable for us for this use. I don't see any issue with it being out at Met Hogan and a Spark. I think that actually makes a lot of sense. It is removed from neighborhoods enough that you aren't going to have the noise complaints coming, so that would make Chief happy, because I'm sure that he will get tired of asking kids to not skateboard at the skate park. I don't think that's going to work out very well for us. As far as moving it from one end to the, the other of that overflow parking, Justin, this is a question for you. I've only been over there once, and it was several years ago. That's all just gravel, isn't it?
It is. We could, we could adjust the parking lot, however, be to, we could add on to the back of the parking lot.
You could go out there with a drag box and, and make up the difference on, on the other end of it, right?
We could.
How big a deal is that?
Uh, to add on to the parking lot? It's just as far, as far as, what we used before was road grindings from some rural projects. The material itself didn't cost, so it's just a matter of some heavy equipment. Uh, I mean, we're probably looking to add 100 by 100 in that parking lot, $5,000 and some labor.
Which is not bad.
Would there still be access? Because the, the diagram that's up right now shows that, that potential property the same width as the parking lot? So if that was utilized, how would you access parking?
There, there is no Escolon Belota access to it currently. You actually go right there between the equipment shed and, and Escolon Feed.
There is Escolon Belota.
There is an entrance on it?
Yeah, right there.
Okay.
And we could, I mean, essentially, we could just go straight to the north and make a driveway or even expand. We have the property, you know, heading to the north, so we could expand that way if we needed to, to get around the current skate park fit was out in the front.
I mean, my, my two cents would be, if we're going to put it there, put it, works on the master plan, so our long-term outlook isn't having to go back and take it out again or have, you know, an issue.
But then what do we do with the rest of the overflow?
That's what I'm getting to. The, but then go ahead and push this parking lot out and, and over. So out, so north and, uh, west. Because this, this skate park can be right here, yeah, is what I'm thinking.
Sounds like a bad idea, mixing cars with skateboards.
No, well, you, you would, they're not going to just be freely open to skateboards. Like, you would have a, you'd have a fence around it, right? And then you would have a separate entrance, and your entrance would still be there.
So, would the city pay for the fence and, and extending the parking lot?
Um, I don't know about that part. All I know is that, that's what I'm problem solving in my head, is, is that we could potentially put it here, and it sounds like it's not crazy expensive to do. And I think in the long run, whether we do it through donation, or whether we do it through the city, which I'd rather do through donation, is, you know, blow that part out a little bit further, take it that way a little bit, bring that over here, and then box it in, in a way that isn't going to be a problem with dust or anything like that.
I definitely agree.
But Chief, Chief noted that skateboard travel on public right-ofways is illegal, correct? So if we, how, how are kids going to get to the skate park? They're going to be riding down the sidewalks? They're going to be maybe in the bike lane? Are they allowed to ride the skateboards down city sidewalks?
Sidewalks, no. Bike lanes, yes.
Okay.
Or OPA.
Bike lane is fine, but not on public. It's no sense. It's the California vehicle.
I'm sorry. And they'd have to be on the right-hand side, right? So then they would have to cross at the light there, um, well, now we have a new crossing, no? Because you still wouldn't be able to get from the church parking lot to the...
Well, I, I understand your concerns as far as location, but I don't see where the solve is, because I don't see Naragi selling, and BNSF is going, it's going to be $30,000 extra a year for us if we try to go that direction, is my understanding. And so unless we have like a spot that, unless we have a spot here you think's a better solution, I just don't see where it would be.
Is there any discussion on the other erect piece of land? I know it's early, but, uh, that's right here on St. John. It's, it is removed.
It's pretty...
It's accessible from like Country Wood neighborhood, but, uh, not from skateboard.
And you would see very, very limited use of it out there, because at that point, kids would be asking for a ride to it instead of then being able to, you know, leave the high school or leave the middle school and get there.
So city staff does, if the picture that's on the screen, how does that affect future expansion of the park?
I would probably suggest, if, if we move forward with this, to do a quick or extensive relook at the master plan. If we push up from our existing location, I mean, everything kind of, you know, moves that way. So the parking, actually, if we go back to the...
See, right there. If you were to master plan it, and just move that over.
Yeah, so, yeah. And I think this is where Councilmember K is going. The, you know, the square there, we just move from the southeast side of the parking lot to the southwest side of the parking lot, and you would, you know, you just kind of mirror that.
Does that create a pinch point for pedestrian traffic if the other three fields were to be built out? Now people have to walk around the skate park to get to the other three fields?
And it's also...
About the third, second, and third phase of the skate park, huh? Mark's never been in the public.
Can you come to the microphone?
You can't build the rest of that park out of the city. They're the money. We're barely trying to keep a budget on the road. You're worried about these things? Why is it not home there? Is that open to the public yet?
Sounds like it, huh?
Oh, it's, sorry. I thought you were cracking a joke. Sorry.
When you guys, basically have a council right there. Would you like a gavel?
In, in a sec here. Well, yeah, we'll open up in just a sec.
How would you have a council?
Any other statements?
We've got a forum.
Any other statements before I take it out to the public?
I, I, I'm just going to reiterate that I, I, I think that the original location of it is the best plan, and, you know, $5,000 to drag out a parking lot, I mean, whether EPF comes up with the money or we decide to, you know, finance it with city funds or, you know, whatever the case is, I think that that's our, our best plan moving forward to, to do this properly, rather than trying to relocate it to a different area for a temporary parking lot that exists now. That doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
Yeah.
That's, that's my final thought on it.
I mean, if it's, if it's as simple as 5,000, I would have the, ideally like to see the EPA or EPF go ahead and start that part of it, and then I'll definitely help fundraise for the five grand, and that way it's not taken out of city funds. Keep it simple. And...
I appreciate that, too. And that's one of the things, going with this build, or we can get equipment donated. We have people with skid, skid steers and other, uh, access to materials and equipment, so, you know.
I think we could get it done.
Yeah.
I have no, no problem with that.
It would definitely be in the MOU.
At least, that's my two cents. Any, any other thoughts before we go out to public? Because Gary had something, I think. I'll go out to public.
Councilmember K, I'm so used to calling you Jeff, I shouldn't hear.
Andy does it all the time.
That was my original thought, too, have it right on the street, so it's easily accessible for this, for the police. But if you look at the map, when you do that, you've, you've physically separated that park from the rest of the park. If it is put where, as proposed, it's actually right there with the park, easily visible with parents who have kids wanting to skate, and those have, and, and also kids playing soccer, baseball, whatever. I mean, now, now it's cohesive, it's, it's attached.
So your thought is, it would potentially have more visibility, not less?
It would have more visibility, because that park's being used during daylight hours, the same as, as the proposed skate park would be.
Hmm. How much of a change does that make? I'm sorry, it's your time. I apologize.
Okay. Uh, no, just leave it where it is. It doesn't require any change at all. You've got the parking where it should be, the overflow parking, and then you've got the proposed skate park location, which is visually, psychologically attached, where parents can look at it and go, there's Johnny, there's Mary, okay, we're good. But the way it is now, it's behind the weed store.
Okay. So you're saying with the, the new proposed spot, leave it there?
Yes.
Gotcha.
While you're commenting, too, you got to remember, too, that this is the EPA and the city are not the same. EPA is separate. They've done their job, they've raised money, they've put forth a proposal, and any earlier MOUs will be totally worthless at this stage. So you're going to have to have a new one anyway. So take it back to staff, have them write up the MOU, bring it forward, and address these issues there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Kurt?
I think it's, I think you guys have overcomplicated it. The number one bullet point on the MOU that exists right now, that it was sent to the EPF, stated they needed to pick a site location. Now, okay, I think you guys should be able to do that, but that should be conditioned on the signing of the MOU. You, you say, all right, this is where we plan to give it to you, but we're not going to make it official till you sign the MOU. And in the past, and, and Frank should go back to Ann Cipriol, because Frank hasn't done his homework, and look at the existing MOU. The MOU just, all, all it does is call out who's responsible for what, and what is going to be part of that project. And once that... be part of that project, and once that's established, EPF is gonna have to come, you know, meet all of those things, and send it to planning, and, and have, have them review it for project, and whatever the permits are gonna be, and then it goes to the planning commission, you know, and then it goes back to you, all these things, there's a process for this.
Yeah.
And back in 2015, that MOU was there, EPF didn't want to sign that, because there was an owner statement in there, that they were responsible for the entire park before they could, and get it approved, before they handed it over to the city. Jeff rewrote a section of that MOU to make it, so the city and EPF were responsible for all of that, the funding and getting that project done, that was rejected out of hand, and you, you just heard, you cannot put those two things together, if it's a city project, it's, it's prevailing wage, if it's, if it's private, it isn't, or it doesn't have to be. So, your, your idea of, well, maybe the city could do, is that's a dangerous statement, that's the problem without doing your history here, and going back to that MOU, I can't even discuss the MOU with you until you've read it and understand, I don't think that's fair to you, so go back, don't get ahead of yourselves, you can condition, you can condition the, you can condition the site on the signing of the MOU, there is an MOU out there, you don't need Frank to come up with a new one, or Jalen to come up with a new one, there was nothing wrong with the old one, but they didn't want to sign it, because they were responsible for all of the funding for, you know, that park, you guys wanna change the, you know, the design or whatever, I, I mean, whatever, but the whole thing has gotta be their project, approved by the city, you know, before you turn it over, you haven't even talked about liability insurance, and, and those kind of things that are increased city costs for this, that got brought up at the Recreation Commission meeting, he's supposed to look into it, but, you know, when you get into the weeds and into those kind of things, which you're not now, you know, you're gonna have to look at those costs, and then have yourself a city council meeting where everybody has input.
Mr. Gerald?
Hold on a sec, we're still in public, hold on one sec, Councilman Jeff, any, any other comments before we go back to DIAS?
If I may have a second shot.
That's fine, Gary, I'm not supposed to, but I've done it already earlier, so...
I realize that, the reason that the original MOU wasn't signed, so it's moved, it's gone, it's ten years old, it wasn't signed, so it has no precedent whatsoever to do with today, so get a new MOU, everybody's happy with, go from there, stop harping on what's in the past, because that's gone, and is irrevocable.
Thanks for the input, yeah, all right, la- last time.
I, I disagree with that.
I know you do.
The, the city signed that MOU, and they sent it to EPF, and it, that's it, that's the agreement the city sent to them, and it's never come back, there, it's not like it died, it didn't die, it just never got signed by the second party, so there is, you know, whatever the EPF does, is what they do, they don't get a right to build a park until they sign that MOU, you don't need a new one, you have one, and it did get sent to them, and it got sent to them six years ago, just because it's six years ago doesn't mean it's not in effect, or it didn't represent the city, you know, I'd go even farther, by saying, the city paid for the incorporation and the original...
Mayor, is this, mayor, this is not a public forum?
I, I get it.
Is it a public hearing? We have to have public comment, one at a time.
Correct, I'll discuss it after with you, but we've already had to come up twice today.
Well, don't get ahead of yourself, Mayor, you know, you can, you can condition...
I don't believe I am getting ahead of myself, Kurt.
On the MOU, you don't, you don't need to, they're not mutually exclusive.
I, I get it, I'm not slow bus, okay, any other questions out there? Okay, we'll bring you back to the DIAS.
Yes, Mr. Gerald, please enlighten the council, what was the issue with the previous MOUs?
The cost that was placed on EPF, the infrastructure, I believe it was to bring the bathrooms to ADA compliance, sidewalks, parking, there were a number of things that EPF was gonna be required to do to build the park, so there was just no agreement between the parties at that point, so it, there were some different conversations that were going on, I was on council until twenty-one, maybe?
Twenty-two.
Yeah, twenty-two, and so there were a lot, a lot of conversations going on between EPF and, I believe Tammy was primarily dealing with it, and it, it would stop and start, but, you know, everything was based on, on funding, so it's, it's kind of short-sighted to just look at the MOU, because there's all these other things that were happening at the same time, was the city gonna fund it, was the city gonna be a partner with, with this? There were times where money was earmarked from rec funds to go to the skate park, right? But it never, it never happened, going back to, you know, my time on the council and trying to hear what the community was saying, there was pushback on using city rec funds to fund this, there was never really a, an agreement on using Main Street Park, you know, the details weren't there, and then the MOU was, was written up, and it was just like, okay, that was cost prohibitive, and there was no way that the, the Park Foundation was gonna be able to raise the money to build the infrastructure and then build the park, so it was never signed, so there were efforts to try and modify it, make it, you know, more of a partnership between city and EPF to try and deliver the project, you know, there were just all these things that were happening with it, so I, I come off council, I end up getting onto EPF, and now we're talking about project delivery, so it was very basic, it's like, here's the, here were the problems, location, the city didn't own some of the parcels, and then funding, you know, don't use city money for it, so that's what we came up with, okay, Dreamland, what can we build for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars? And that's what we came up with, they came back with the bowl.
So here's my concern, another concern, yet another concern, but eventually, whether, whatever location it is, let's say either the west side or the east side of Hogan Park.
Sure.
And I know the public is gonna laugh, audience members are gonna laugh, but that now becomes a public benefit, and whether it's a skate park or not, we're still required to have ADA accessible paths to the skate park, it still has to be accessible for a wheelchair, even though it's a skate park, it's a requirement, and what I, we don't have those paths accounted for right now in this project.
That, that's the purpose of the MOU, so if, if we know where the site is, then we can start to fill in the, the details of it, because that, that was one of the problems before, it's like, okay, the, the original, so this master plan came about because we wanted to get a location for the skate park, and it went from just, give us a location out there for the skate park, to we better have a workshop, we better, you know, do a master plan, so I think it was twenty-two thousand dollars for that master plan by the time we were done, trying to just place the skate park on it, right? So the, the, the skate park itself, where it is, that was from council wanting workshop, council wanting to do a master plan and put this in, thing in place, even though we knew when that was done, that the cost then was about fifteen million dollars, and we were never gonna be able to do that, so then we said, okay, what if we phase this thing in? What if we just do, you know, this first phase where people want more parking, and we've got, and we could put skate park in there? Well, we could never get the funding for the skate park from the city, and we couldn't raise enough money to, to do it on our own, which, you know, kinda negated the whole process, so, you know, here we are, whether it's on the east side or the west side, we can deliver a, a full standalone feature, and if we need to, to do sidewalks, we can have that conversation as part of the MOU, you know, that might drive the, you know, the conversation, too.
And that's, that's my fear, is because whether it's the west side or the east side, you still have to have an accessible path of travel, and right now, if it's on the west side, I mean, you have a little hill there, and, and so all of that needs to be graded, I mean, you're talking slopes and sidewalks, and, I mean, but if you do it on the east side, you're still gonna have to have accessible path of travel around this, and, and that, my fear is that that's gonna kill the project, so now you're talking ninety thousand dollars for a bowl instead of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and, then the bowl starts becoming unrealistic.
And that's part of the, part of the issue, right? We've got this money, we've got a project, we've got a project that we can deliver, but we can't deliver it until the city says it's gonna go here, and here's the ground rules, and that's why, that's, I think that was the conversation, was why we're, we're where we're at, so it's time to come to the city and say, this is what we're proposing to do, is the city good with that, and if so, where's it gonna go, and then we get with Jalen, get with the city manager, and hammer out, here's the details, and then that goes to you all, and then you guys decide if those terms are agreeable or not.
So what happens if, if we decide on the location, and we hammer out the MOU, and then you realize that you can't even do the bowl for ninety thousand, or a hundred and twenty-five thousand, what happens then?
Then we go back to fundraising, we go back to the community and say, hey, we're this, we've gotta do this, we're this short, and this is what we wanna do, the, the start date is a tentative date that they've got us on the books, given that, you know, we can get through this, you know, site location and MOU, if we can get through that, and, and we're, we have the funding to do what needs to be done, we're good to go, the, the past MOUs, there's no way that we were gonna be able to fund new bathrooms, new sidewalks, and new parking lot out there, so, you know, there was never a meeting of the minds on that, it was the city saying, this is what we're gonna require of you if you wanna build it here, and that kinda ended that conversation.
Would you ever consider an alternative to a skate park?
Well, he's already promised it.
Yeah, this money has been raised specifically for...
I'm just asking the question.
Yep, and it's, it's not to say that the Park Foundation ends with this project, this, it continues on, and it was designed to be, you know, you know, for the benefit of the city and recreation, so, but for as long as this has been going on, and even when it was, when the EPF was first created, the primary project was a skate park, and we've got, you know, we've raised the money...
Right.
Based on that, so it'd be very difficult to say, we were kidding, you know...
Right, I understand that.
Whatever, yeah.
I think we, because Gary brings up a good point about removing it, where you have eyes on it, but police, I'm assuming, could come in there still, right? So my, my thought is, we're overthinking it, I think this is part of the discussion on here, it doesn't say we're officially doing an MOU today, I think that we make a decision, my personal thought is probably going where Gary's talking about, because I do think he's right with that, and we can address any of the MOU issues that Kurt might have in the meantime, because we're gonna have to bring it back to the, the city anyways, and we go forward, give this, give him a, some numbers, so he has something to actually work with, and, and go from there, and this is a project that's supposed to benefit the people of this community, and we're kicking mud in his face, I think that's absolutely ridiculous.
Mind if I jump back in here for a second?
Yeah.
You weren't the president of the EPF in 2019, right? Who, who was it at the time?
I believe Mike Rourke was it, is it Mike?
And, and he, he doesn't even live around here anymore, right? So, can't even ask him why that MOU wasn't signed, but even though I, I never know what I'm talking about, because I sit up here, I've read the entire MOU, and what I noticed about it was that it appeared to me to be about four point two million dollars by the time it was all said and done, with all of the requirements that were being put squarely on EPF from the city, right? Four point two million dollars, how in the world, in this community, would you ever fundraise for a number at four point two million dollars? That would be impossible, and the reason that it was such, how much did the bathroom project cost us over at Hogan Innis Park to have that fixed?
Half a million.
Half a million dollars, so that was a city problem that was being put on EPF in that MOU, correct? Let's just be honest.
As, from my position on the council, yes.
I, I never know whether to say, district attorney, councilman, mister, you know...
Jeff's good.
Can you just quit swapping hats?
So, no.
So, that said, there, there is one thing that, that I do wanna, wanna point out, moving the skate park to that location, you know, as it was originally proposed, Gary, as you were saying, right now, you're still putting that in the middle of nothing, there, there's nothing there, no, right? That's grass and the batting cages are...
No, there's nothing, it would be adjacent to our park shop, maybe like the, the northwest corner of our actual park shop is where it would be.
So it, it, it still would not, would not give any line of sight, and even if we went ahead and said that we had, you know, we had every dollar to produce this thing exactly the way that it is, you know, on this image in front of us right now, and we put that baseball diamond in, now you've got people sitting on bleachers, with people skateboarding, and a skateboard park right behind them, Gary, I'm sure that you've spent a lot of time at skateboard parks, because you look like that kinda guy, I would encourage you to at least go sit at one for twenty or thirty minutes and listen to how loud it actually can be.
It can be loud, can I make one correction there? It is adjacent to existing diamonds.
There is a T-ball, you, you're right, there, there is a T-ball diamond out there, so the, the little kids, if you had older kids, I guess, yeah, you're, you're right, it is adjacent to that, my point being, if you were sitting on those bleachers of that baseball diamond, and you have somebody riding a skateboard right behind you, you'd probably be turning around thinking somebody was shooting a gun behind you every once in a while and startling the snot out of you, so I, I think that that actually is a really good reason to put it on the other side of that parking lot, still, is that, you know, it's, it's removed a little bit, that noise factor, as far as, you know, watching kids skateboard in it, and being able to, you know, watch, you know, be in two places at once, I mean, I've got three kids, and there's a lot of times I wasn't in two places at once, we were doing one or we were doing the other, and as they got bigger, we were able to, you know, let them go adventure on their own, and hopefully they didn't come back with broken bones, and I still get to play that game with my youngest all of the time, anyway, I, I still, you know, stand by my statement, I think the original location is still the best thing that we can do, is that what it currently looks like?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, it is currently dirt.
So it would be right here.
Yeah, dirt, dirt, so, yeah, I, I truly don't see why, you know, I, I don't see any advantage to putting something in the middle of, of something, and then when you go back to that, that master plan, that's actually where the dumpsters are supposed to be, there's parking there, and then, what is number twenty on that?
Twenty-one.
Uh, existing building, your, your existing maintenance building.
That's our park shop, yeah.
Yes, it would be right up against that, that building, right?
Can you go back to the satellite view, please? And off to the right.
So that, that's not even correct, if we went past what's already a parking lot, we wouldn't even be in that location, we'd be in the baseball field.
The T-ball.
North there, north.
North.
North of the green.
North the green, Kurt.
There.
You would just walk a hundred feet off the, the parking lot.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. The T-ball field is actually right up against the shed, right?
Yeah, right behind that white building in the picture.
It, it's, it's in the green area there, essentially, right?
I don't see any fly balls flying into the skate park for T-ball, but you never know.
Have you been? Are you sure?
While council is looking at this, I, I wanna make one thing a hundred percent clear, I'm not, I hope you don't think I'm throwing mud in your face, I appreciate everything that you guys have done, I just wanna make sure that you've thought of everything, I, I deal in the construction world every day, and, I mean, you blink and the cost, costs you ten thousand dollars, so...
I appreciate, I appreciate the, the perspective, for sure, so...
And I think that you brought up a, a very valid point about, you know, ADA accessibility and sidewalk to it.
Think about it, where's the closest sidewalk if we put it on the west side or the east side? The east side, we can tie into the main parking lot, but if, if we have to extend a public sidewalk...
Easier to hear, because we have sidewalk.
But what I'm saying is if it goes on the west side, you're talking from this, the stack shack, the whole way down along the edge of the park, and that, that has to be a paved surface. And that, that has to be a paved surface. So, I mean, just something to consider, that's all.
And probably a concrete path for, for it to be at that end.
Yep. And it has to, can't slope greater than five percent. I mean, it sucks, but it's reality.
I don't know how it works with the city, cause it's different probably for a private. Yeah, but I know it's like my office, they allow you to do an ADU or certain, uh, yeah, an ADU bank account. Have you heard that?
ADA, yeah.
ADA, sorry, I said AU, huh? ADA, uh, bank account where you can put a small fee in it. And so, um, while you're funding that, you're legally compliant.
Those are generally for existing conditions where the cost to retrofit is cost prohibitive to any sort of business or, or private citizen. Um, it has been raised, I mean, this would be a public improvement if EPF were to put it in because it's now into a city park. Um, and therefore we'd have to comply with all sort of state and, and local laws.
In order to get to that number, we have to get there, correct?
On Escalon Balota, it looks like we have concrete sidewalk all the way to that dirt parking lot. Is that correct, Justin?
Yeah, all the way up into the feed store, we have sidewalk.
So.
So you'd have to add on.
Just adjacent to the feed, we'd have to add on approximately where those vehicles are on the east side of the building up to, uh, the parking lots where we would have to pave sidewalk.
Yeah, that, that makes that almost definite in my head.
Much, much more cost effective than trying to put it out in the middle of nowhere for right now. If the, uh, if the whole parking lot was there, then, you know, I think we'd have a little more of a discussion. But I think, I think that the, uh, original proposed location is the best thing that we can do. Uh, aside from picking a location, I don't know that there's anything else. We've, we've discussed funding. Um, night's over, everyone go home.
Any more discussions or anyone wanna put something out there?
Yeah, I, I still disagree. I don't, I don't think that's the, the best location for it. You have the overflow parking, which is used, uh, uh, if we fill that thing up, right?
Oh, most definitely. Oh, yeah.
Yep. And separating it from the park inhibits future expansion. I agree with putting it in the back. I see a shorter, a shorter runway between the existing parking lot tying into the, the overflow lot and then cutting over into that area. And hopefully that prompts, yeah, that prompts additional development. Uh, it's just my opinion, you know, take it or leave it. Uh, can we zoom out a little bit? Yeah, what you're looking at right there is the future of recreation in Escalon. So develop it or don't. I'm a little embarrassed to be sitting up here saying how we've gone back and forth over this so many times. Uh, there's, there's been people out there putting forth this effort and we wanna berate them over how long it took or what they did or didn't talk about. And bottom line is the money's there. There's a project sitting there. What we're being asked right here, right? Recommendation, introduce. Uh, and city council, discuss any next steps for Escalon Skate Park, including potential for preferred location. To me, that narrows it down to just the, the location. And just like so many other things, uh, behind this dice, we just can't agree. So what's gonna happen is it's gonna continue to just get pushed off and pushed off and pushed off. And eventually it's gonna be a quarter million dollars. And we're gonna say, oops, sorry, EPF, you need to double your money in order to get anything done. Thanks for your efforts anyway. Um, I mean, I'm trying to say it without swearing. I mean, all of us up here need to crap or get off the pot.
Well, am I able to make a, I mean, I've normally let everyone else do. But I can make a motion, right?
Make a motion or just discussing?
Oh, did he have anything else you wanted? Sorry.
No, we were just discussing. I don't know if there was a motionable.
Oh, I, I was wanting to make a motion unless you had something else you wanted to add.
I don't have anything to add.
Um, I make a motion that we move forward, uh, and we put it uh, in the spots where Gary was talking about. Um, because I do see that shorter, shorter move there that Jeremy's saying, or sorry, Councilman Ingalls saying. And, um, we addressed the potential MOU issues, uh, while we're in discussion. It's gonna come back to citizens anyways. You know, allow this thing to get some legs. Uh, you can't, uh, have a project without having numbers. So that would be my motion.
I'll second that one.
Okay. Um, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay.
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 Um, do we have abstain or did you?
I abstain.
Okay. Okay. Do we have another potential proposal?
The, the only reason that I, I don't agree with Councilmember Ingalls is that we, we currently have that full length of sidewalk along Escalon Balota. When you look at the, the path from the existing asphalt parking lot to get back to the gravel parking lot, you would have to concrete all of that. You would have to hook west around the backside of the implement shed or whatever it is that you have there before you ever got to the corner where you could put that, uh, skate park in. Um, to make it ADA accessible. Uh, while the improvement, I think, yes, may, um, push us towards, you know, some more development in the area and, and all of that sort of stuff. I don't know who's gonna pay for it and I have a feeling that, uh, EPF is not going to be able to.
Can we work up a, uh?
Hold up, just to address that.
Can you ask the officer, look into that?
Yeah, just, just to address that real quick. I'd rather have them cutting through the park and going through the back than we know the kids are gonna skateboard than them skateboard right in front of the feed supply as well as the main entrance to the park. Cause that's how they're gonna get there.
I have a quick, um, can we, can we do both? Or have.
Spill the cost of both.
Spill the cost of both of them and, and go from there?
One, one or the other and give the opportunity to, to cost it out and see if it's.
Yeah, I think so. That's what I would do.
And can I amend your motion?
Yeah, you can.
One, one spot or, or the other, uh, and give the, uh, EPF the opportunity to cost it out and see whether or not it's feasible.
Um, I would second that.
Wait, so what, just hold on, what's the motion?
To, to place the, we wanna place, place the skate park at one end or the other of this. But the feasibility is what the concern here is. So just to give them the opportunity to look and see what, if it's cost prohibitive, one direction or the other, and then come back to us. And if it's not cost prohibitive, to put it over, uh, to the west side of that existing parking lot, then we'll go that route.
Can I make a suggestion to your motion?
Sure. Consensus is what I like.
Have a, have a, uh, conversation with the chief building official to see if there's a driver for, uh, accessibility.
Okay. You adding that on?
Yeah, can we move, we want all of that?
Just consensus or do we need a vote on?
Oh, no, we should vote.
Um, I would second that.
All right.
Hold on, so now we're just.
The motion.
You mean a motion.
Yeah, I know. What's the motion now?
To, to direct, to direct EPF to look at both the west side and the east side, do a cost benefit analysis and have a discussion with the chief building official regarding accessibility. And then that would determine, ultimately help determine the final location that is greeted to, between EPF and council.
And, and if council agrees, maybe what I heard within that is also at the same time it's start to explore MOU, um, deal points that we can kind of.
Yeah, so we can all get it all cleaned up if there's language issues or whatever. And, and then we can address it all.
Yeah, we kinda wanna run it concurrently.
Right motion.
Yeah, we wanna do everything.
All right. Um, so that's, I seconded that. So, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay.
Abstain.
And abstain. All right, so three, one abstain. Three, one, one. All right. So I think we go on to council communications, right? Yeah. Um, Jeff, I went with you last time, so.
You always go with me. I'm always ready.
Um, let's go, Councilman Ingalls this time. I'll go on the other side.
Uh, I'll be, I'll be brief. Um, September fourth, let me just verify that real.
Call it night in America.
That too. Uh, yeah, September fourth, Thursday. Uh, the Escalon Lions Club will be holding a, a community barbecue at Hogan and Spark. Um, everyone in the community is invited. Uh, they'll be, they will be serving hot dogs, hamburgers and soft drinks. Um, come on out and, uh, say hello to your Escalon Lions.
Okay, um, over to Councilman Kay.
I've got a couple of things. Um, we never, uh, went back to that traffic study that we were discussing about Mitchell in California, uh, at our last meeting. Um, you had stated that one week of that school was not in session. Uh, is it possible for us to redo that with two concurrent weeks of school being in session?
It was done at that time because I realized after pulling the data that it was, I realized that we, school wasn't in session, so I extended it a week, so a full week.
You extended a week, okay. Frank had cut us off from that conversation, so I didn't know where we ended up on that. So I just wanted to, um, the, the Valley Transportation trucks coming out of the, uh, the cannery. I know that Councilman Strowman brought it up to you. Uh, I know that Jalen also relayed my, my message that, uh, I had almost been hit twice by them within twenty-four hours. Um, are, are we patrolling that area any heavier, uh, doing anything to try and keep an eye on them?
Officers have been directed to, yes. I don't know of any citations that were written, but they have been instructed to increase their patrols in that area.
It, it seems like every, every time I go up and down McHenry, you know, up or down McHenry, I'm seeing one of those trucks, you know, pause the brake, you know, just enough to, to turn the corner and, and that's all that they're doing. They're not stopping at that stop sign whatsoever. Uh, and it doesn't matter whether they're going north or south. It seems like, you know, there's just no hesitation, pull right out into traffic. Uh, so I just wanted to mention that. Um, while this isn't exactly an Escalon thing, um, we all know about the mother and child that was, uh, found in the canal down the road from us on one twenty. Um, the gentleman Juan Heredia, that, uh, my, my wife has been following him for a couple of years and, and showing me all of these stories of, of this, this guy that spends his time and his money and his resources to, um, go and locate these, you know, victims of, of accidents, you know, all over, you know, really the west coast. I think that I saw, he was in Washington a few weeks ago, uh, or Oregon. I just wanted to, you know, mention that, that that guy is absolutely amazing and what he is doing, you know, his, his work i- is absolutely God's work. He's bringing closures to, to families all over the place. Uh, and I just, I can't imagine, um, you know, my, my wife, my, my child, my, my daughter, you know, grandchild, you know, whatever it is, you know, thirty days of them missing, you know, just for an independent person to find her in a, in a canal. And I just, I just wanted to mention how heart wrenching that story is, but how heroic the work is that he does. Um, and on, uh, the subject that Cherry Hill had brought up earlier, AB four ninety-five. Um, I don't know how much, uh, the average populace is paying any attention to, uh, that essentially it would give any person the right to walk into a school and with, uh, filling out a, a simple form saying, I think that this child is in danger. Uh, no relative, um, no background check, not even identification has to be given. This, this bill is written so vaguely. Um, that would give any adult the opportunity to walk into a school and say, uh, this child's in danger and I'm taking them and this form says that I can. And they wouldn't even be able to contact the parent and say, your child was just taken from you. Uh, this is a absolutely horrendous bill. Uh, and what Cherry was talking about at the Capitol tomorrow, um, I hope that anybody that, uh, has any concern for the, the future kids in this state, uh, and has the time can go up there and, and stand outside of the Capitol, uh, in, in solidarity against that horrendous bill that is being pushed through our Capitol. Uh, and that's all that I have. Sorry, it was so long winded and a long night.
It was an important one. Um, I mean, Councilman Strowman.
Yeah, um, again, just wanna reiterate, uh, for the EPF team, thank you for all of your hard work. I know it's been a mountain to get here, but almost there. Um, to kinda piggyback, um, on the discussion regarding AB, um, four ninety-five, um, I'm looking for consensus amongst the council that we write a formal letter um, to, uh, the powers that be in Sacramento opposing this bill.
I would back that.
Absolutely.
So, um, I don't know if, if, so if you could bring that before council at the next meeting. Uh, we need to stand up for our kids and our families. Um, I don't know. I, I mean, I follow, um, Juan Heredia as well. And while, uh, that accident technically happened outside the county, something to consider is, is, is recognizing his hard work. Um, because the news media is reporting that this happened close to Escalon. So it may be an opportunity where the city council recognizes him, um, for all of his hard work. So I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that, but it is in our community. Uh, well, very close to our community, so, um, give that some thought. Um, lastly, and I, I won't go too deep in the woods, but, um, I think that most of you know that there's been some concern regarding the, um, grades on the, um, what'd that be? The west side of Main Street Park. And so, uh, Public Works received a quote in twenty fourteen, um, to level that out. Um, and that quote has since been expired. Uh, but trying to coordinate between our events, um, wanted to see if we could, if I could have council consensus that Public Works could present that quote. Um, and we can have a discussion about possibly leveling at least the west side of the park to give our events like Park Feet, Christmas on Main, the Farmer's Market and allowing the community to walk on a level surface. I, I know we don't wanna spend the grant funds on creating a DG, decompose grant of pathways, et cetera, et cetera. But at least if we could come in, uh, grade the park, put down some hydro seed, um, and try to make it more accessible for all. I, I think we need to look at that as a council. So I was looking for council consensus that we just add that as an agenda item that we can talk about it.
We back that as well.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with that. At least exploring it.
That's all I wanna do is improve it because, um, if you spent any time at all at the park, um, it's pretty uneven and, uh, it's, uh, not easy to get around. And, and I feel like we're, we're limiting, uh, some of our less mobility, less mobile people from accessing parks like Farmer's Market or Christmas on Main or, um, anything that we, any events that we hold. Uh, so thank you for that. Uh, and appreciate all of the discussion tonight. Um, and that's all I have.
Um, Pro Tim?
Yeah. So first, uh, address the fact that I am very excited that a paved park can potentially be underway very quickly. Um, I've been following EPF since their inception and wanting to be involved. And I hope that going forward, we, you know, I am able to see some public posts and, and inviting the public to come to those meetings and help. Um, many hands make light work. And I feel like once this is open and invited and the public's on board and you, and help is there in your office, that I think we can raise another one twenty-five a lot more quickly than that first one twenty-five. And I am excited of the potential now, um, that there's this open communication. And I hope to see you guys more often, um, and to see those meetings open and, and more people involved. So, uh, very excited about the potential of that coming soon. Um, I guess again, another potential is SJ, uh, SSJID power. Again, another great news going down the line. Um, our staff has been working hard on all these fronts and is just making things better in Escalon, um, little by little. So, um, thank you guys for your work, uh, Jeff and Sean, making that happen, um, and bringing that forth. Um, I don't have any questions or, oh, thank you for Jalen to, I know I was, I've been, you know, the, uh, pedestrian crossings, um, is one of the things that I am concerned about in Escalon. Thank you for doing the research on that Hawk system on McHenry or on one twenty. Um, one twenty is a difficult thoroughfare there to navigate. And at least we know what the cost would be and it's a high cost if we were gonna go forward with that. But at least the public knows what we would have to raise to go forward with that and what we would have to spend. Um, but besides that, I don't have any requests today from staff, but I do want to request from citizens to come on out to the Farmer's Market on Wednesday and, uh, celebrate Escalon and the end of summer here. And I hope to see you guys out there. That's it.
Um, I'll keep it short. Um, I. I appreciate the EPF, all the efforts you're putting out, you know, you're trying to do something real positive for the community, and I, I do see that, and, and I think that we'll get there. I think it's just going to take some effort in making sure it's all, you know, what the community wants to see. But other than that, I think everything else has been touched on that I can think of for now, so meeting adjourned.